on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vatic Kiotis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kouyas?
Here.
Commissioner Koulianis?
Here.
This evening's invocation will be given by Reverend Lisa Bradford of the Church on the Bayou. If we can remain standing and turn and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Please pray with me. Gracious heavenly Father, Creator, we are thankful for the privilege of living in this beautiful city. We thank you for the privilege of living in freedom. Let us never take for granted the price that we pay to live in democracy. We thank you for this governing body and we ask that you would be in each conversation, that your hand would guide each vote and each choice, and that you would bless each person participating. We thank you for your love, your guidance, and your grace. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if I could have Chief Jeff Young and Chief Scott Young come forward.
As we do every year when we get close to the 9/1/1 anniversary date, we always want to remember our first responders and those that provide service in that regard. And this evening, we have a proclamation for that purpose. Whereas Patriot Day, officially known as National Day of Service and Remembrance, is observed every September 11th in memoriam of the individuals who lost their lives as a result of terrorist attacks on September 11th, 2001. And whereas each year on this date, we honor the innocent victims that were taken too soon, we honor the first responders, firefighters, law enforcement officers, emergency workers, and service members who answered the call of duty, and the brave civilians who rushed into action to save lives that day. And whereas each year, we remember the sacrifices of the first responders who lost their lives and all the families left behind, we continue to emerge stronger and more resilient by serving our communities and lifting the lives of our fellow citizens and carrying on the legacies of our heroic patriots. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes September 11th as a day in memoriam of those who were lost and acknowledge those who united in response to tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. Now therefore, I coast as Vatic Kiotis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2023, as a national day of service and remembrance. And we have our two chiefs, Chief Jeff Young, Tarpon Springs Police Department, and Chief Scott Young, Tarpon Springs Fire Department, to receive this proclamation. So, thank you both.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, we'd just like to thank the city for keeping this event in their minds and memories. We don't ever want to forget that tragic day. I was on duty that day, and it always sticks in my mind as I watch TV exactly what we were doing that day, and it's always going to be in my memory as the day goes. But thank you for keeping it alive and thinking of us in this day. Thank you.
Does any commissioner have any comments? Jeff, would you like to say something?
I would just echo what Scott was talking about. I, you know, remember that day like it was yesterday. My father retired from New York City Fire Department. We actually, family and friends up there, as many people in this room have had, family members up there in Washington DC, Pennsylvania, and across the globe that have been, you know, suffered at the hands of terrorists. And we come together as a great nation, and we love the City of Tarpon Springs and appreciate the proclamation and remembering all those that sacrificed so much that day. Thank you.
We thank you both, and I invite any commissioner, if you've got any comments you'd like to make.
I just want to thank you both. I know we've gone through some tough times of lately. I was there for September 11th. My childhood friend was the gentleman who was bouncing the boss down from Canton Fitzgerald, and he never made it out. And I lost a lot of friends that day, so I appreciate all the good thoughts. Terrorism doesn't belong, and we need to fight for freedom every single day, and I thank you that you do that both for us. Thank you.
I'd like to invite any of the public, if you two could retire if you'd like, and I'd like to invite any members of the public, if they'd like to say something about this proclamation, please come forward to the podium. Thank you.
Michael Kaskoudis, 623 East Tarpon Avenue. I remember reading a passage, and I just wrote it down as you were giving the proclamation, and it goes like this. "To remember, the cost of freedom is buried in the ground. Those who survive need to tell the story of that cost." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaskoudis. Mr. Delakis?
Here, Delakis, 5014 Ashland Avenue. I just want to broaden this a little bit. That event, that day awakened us to things that we weren't used to before, being attacked on our own homeland. Something that America really hasn't experienced in the 1800s. What was it, 1812, the British came into DC and burned the capital? My history, but... So we have somewhat become immune to what it takes sometimes. Our fathers and grandfathers have long passed since World War I and World War II, and those who've suffered through a wrongful war in Vietnam created a distaste in some ways. But we're now facing new, new terrorisms on a global scale. If you watch the news, I mean, it's even, I watched the Business Channel, and they're talking about the grain deal between, that Erdogan is trying to broker between Putin and now Putin's trying to go to Kim Jong-un to buy trade grain for warheads. And we're the bastion, we're the defenders of freedom. I was watching, I know it's weird to tie all this stuff together, but I was watching this weekend, there was a program on ancient history about how during the republic forming, how we formed alliances with France. And France used their treasury to help us become free, which then in turn generated their revolution, which then freed them also, but the point was, they came to our rescue. And we need to continue to be there for Ukraine because that is not the end game. We need to find some ways to get people to stop all of this. I don't know how, but I just see it rolling into an apocalypse that none of us have control over. So, in honor of those who have passed, through those at 9/11, World War II, Vietnam, Iran, Iraq, Afghanistan, we all remember that you fought for us to be able to be here, to speak with y'all, to have the ability to influence our lives. Home rule. Remember that. That's how it all started. Somebody laying their life down so we could have these freedoms now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Mr. Gettys?
David Ballard Gettys, Jr., Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor. Much of this nation's financial record keepings were kept in the Twin Towers. Today, we see that our nation's finances are in a free fall. There were two airplanes that hit the Twin Towers. To my understanding, there were three buildings that collapsed. I don't believe the math is correct when you have three buildings and two airplanes. I do believe that George Bush had three fingers pointing back at himself when he was standing on top of the rubble and talking through that bullhorn of his. He had three fingers pointing back at himself. I believe we have an act of treason. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Jump, I should ask, is there any remote access comments concerning this proclamation?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Originally, we had scheduled on the agenda a special presentation, actually a routine update by Advent Health, Doris Pinellas, but they couldn't make it this evening, and instead, we're substituting an update on the effects of Storm Adalia on Tarpon Springs, and it'll be given to us by police chief, I'm sorry, Fire Chief Scott Young.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Scott Young, Fire Chief. I'm just here to give you a quick update on the storm and kind of where we started and where we're at today. So as we know, the storm passed west of Tarpon Springs, approximately 100 miles offshore, headed north. On Monday, August 28th, City Manager signed a declaration of local state of emergency, and then we again signed it yesterday, September 4th. We felt it was necessary because we still had some ongoing things we were trying to do, and that just keeps us under the umbrella for FEMA. Our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, became operational Tuesday night at 7 o'clock, Tuesday morning, excuse me, 7 o'clock in the morning. We worked to about Wednesday evening, 7 PM. At that point, we went to a partial activation of our EOC, just essential people. So we housed about 150 city employees, fed them throughout the whole entire event, to make sure we had everybody safe and ready to act when needed. We had wind gusts between 30 to 65 miles an hour in the city. We didn't clock anything above 65, but it was just a few times that that happened. So wind really wasn't an issue in town. What we did have was the flooding, as you may, I'm sure you're aware of. We had about 27 streets that we know of that were flooded, probably more than that, we just didn't get to them all. The total surge height that we just got today, that the initial numbers that the county's reporting, they make them out with more official numbers as they get going, but they believe it was around four and a half feet above the high tide. So, not a lot compared to what we thought we were going to be getting earlier, but it is enough, enough to make some homes flooded and damaged. Major streets, of course, that we know always flood, Dotica Neese, Chesapeake Drive, Seabreeze Drive, Park Street West, Roosevelt area, and so like, so on. We also were able to utilize the city cameras, which are a big benefit in the Operational Center. The Doc's camera, the one at Craig Bayou, we had them up on the screen so we could watch the water throughout the whole event, and we had marks that we kind of were watching on trees or barricades and stuff, so we could tell where the water was coming or how fast it was coming up. So that was a big benefit, until I think one of them, I believe, went down because of the power, but those cameras were something that we haven't used before, which were really beneficial. So that was, that was great. We did have one major significant event during this storm. We had a structured fire call at Chesapeake Mobile Home Park at the end of Chesapeake. We lost two mobile homes during that fire, and two others were damaged because of the fire. One of the biggest problems that we had, we weren't able to gain access because of the flooded roads getting to the park. We couldn't get our fire trucks in. The water was too high. Firefighters started grabbing hose, carrying it on their backs, wading through the waist-deep water to get to the fire as much as they could, until we got the Sheriff's Department, High Water Vehicles, the National Guard came in to help us get the firefighters down to the fire, which extended the period of time that the fire was going. We also, we originally took our fireboat off the boat lift because of the storm. We actually went, ran out, got it, put it back in the water, and had it go to the fire. It actually was the main reason we got the fire out, was to buy use of the fireboat, pulling lines off of that. So, so again, we would, you know, thank the Sheriff's Office for their assistance and the National Guard. Public Works reported that we had no damage to city buildings throughout the storm, which is good. City projects that we have going, the City Clerk's office, project had no damage, it's still on track to keep going. The Lemon Street, Shattuck Brick Street project site suffered no damage. The Anclot River Dredge project suffered no damage. The Cicada and Lozilium Roof project did not suffer any damage. The Seabreeze project had suffered significant ground saturation due to the flooding, which was going to delay the paving of the street. So I'm not exactly sure at this point where we're at with that, but I think it was going to delay it by about a week. But the infrastructure and construction equipment suffered no damage. Public Services, if you remember Irma, we had some issues with lift stations and stuff, but I can report this time, we did not have any problems with lift stations. That's because Paul's team had generators out in place, everything kept running. We had some lift stations that were flooded, but they were still operational. So we, everything worked as designed, so it had no interruptions or overflows from these wastewater treatment plants. So far, city costs, what we have to do right after the storm is start calculating how much money we have spent on different things, like buildings before the storm, after the storm, diesel fuels for generators, all that kind of stuff. The city so far has spent about $693,000 in costs, but that money should be reimbursed from FEMA because we're under that act now that was approved. So that is good news. We're still calculating to make sure we don't have anything else that we haven't seen yet, so that's going to be an ongoing process over the next week. Parks and Recs shut down services, but that's part of the revenue of that 693, so the lost revenue in the golf course for those few days, that's calculated into that also. So where are we at now? We had numerous homes and businesses flooded, as we all know, throughout the city. We go and, right after we're able to gain access, our teams go out and start assessing the quick damage report of what we have. This has been going on for a week now. Our EM Coordinator, Megan and myself, came in on Saturday, met with FEMA and state officials, went around the city as, doing another double check, trying to get the numbers so the government can declare Pinellas County as a disaster area, which they did that afternoon. So we've had two homes destroyed in town. We had 53 homes with major damage. We had 22 homes with minor damage. We had 50 homes affected, and two still need to be confirmed. So that's about 129 homes affected by the storm so far. Just the other day, they, like I said, they did give us individual assistance aid, so that number may go up when people start realizing they can get some money back for some of these damages. They might call and say, well, I did have some water, but it wasn't noticeable from the outside when they do the windshield assessment. So that number may rise some. We'll have to see. As you know, Red Cross was out over the weekend going door-to-door in affected areas to see if anybody needed help or assistance with anything. Pinellas County, like I said, was added to the major disaster declaration, which makes our community eligible for federal assistance and individual assistance. FEMA Disaster Survival Assistance Teams will be, started going out yesterday to homeowners, renters, and businesses that were impacted by the hurricane. Our economic developer, development manager, Karen Lemmons, will be dealing with all the businesses and what they need and what they can do to get assistance, getting themselves back up and running, either with federal assistance, if that comes through, but she's working diligently with them. The county is working on setting up FEMA disaster recovery centers. They want to put one in the North County, so we've been working with them, trying to figure out a place we could do that. They want to set up a mobile site and a possibly office site, so we're trying to figure out if there's any place that we can use to do that. Right now, we haven't found any place, but we're just working with them on that. That'll just be a center that people can show up to and help with the paperwork and stuff like that for their individual assistance to help them. Further updates for the hurricane are available, posted on disaster.pinelis.gov, Facebook at pinellasgov, and Twitter at pinellas.gov, searching the hashtag #pinellasadelia. We will also be posting information on the city's Facebook pages, both the city's page, the Fire Department page, and the Police Department's Facebook pages, along with the city's website, with information that citizens can go to to get assistance, or find links to get assistance. So the main thing that we need to understand is this was not a direct hit, this was not a hurricane hit on Tarpon Springs, which is kind of an outcast of wind and flooding. Flooding is the major concern. Like I've been telling some people, if a storm would have come in, probably Hernando, Pasco line, we'd be talking a whole different story here in town. I think we'd have had a lot more water, a lot more surge. There were some reports at times of seven to nine feet of surge coming to Tarpon Springs, but luckily, that didn't happen. So like I said, right now, the preliminary numbers are showing about four and a half feet. So that's pretty much what I have so far. We'll still be working throughout the week on more things as we go along, and we'll try to keep you up to post, up to date on anything that we can post out and let citizens know where we're at, what we're doing.
Thank you, Chief. Let me ask commissioners, do any have questions this side? Vice Mayor Lunt?
I actually have one specific question. In the area of Chesapeake that you couldn't get into, was this because of the intersection or farther up the street? Because I know it flooded quite a bit up the street.
It was there, getting in from, say, Gulf Road, getting up to that. Also Riverside and Spring Bayou, through all that way, going to the bridge, was all flooded, waist-deep water.
So it was basically both sides?
Both sides, both sides. Perfect storm, right there.
Just comments for overall.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any locations set up for the people that were affected to maybe, you know, if their refrigerators went bad, for them to get ice or, you know, cleaning chemicals or advice?
They can call us at the station for any type of advice we can give them. The county is not setting up ice drops or anything like that. They don't, they try to get away from that, as long as the grocery stores and stuff are open, they want to use them first before they start doing all that kind of stuff. So they don't really do it.
How about advice?
Advice, they can call our office, and we can see if we can help them with that. If not, we will direct them to the people that can give them that advice.
Thank you. Thank you for what you did. Appreciate you.
Commissioner Koulianis?
I have some comments. Can we do comments?
No, please, yes.
Okay. So, you know, I, first I want to commend the chiefs and the, the department heads and obviously Mark LaChorus for coordinating everything and making a really tough time as well as it could turn out. You know, I, I was helping out on Monday with sandbags at the two locations, one at the Water Park and then over at Dorset Park, and, you know, sand was coming, the crews were going around, filling the sand up, replenishing the bags. People were lined up and getting stuff, like, really quick. It worked very well. Then Tuesday evening, I made a little trip to the EOC, got my perfunctory 15 minutes in, and saw all the people that were there to spend the night. Again, obviously, Mark, the chiefs, Paul, Tom, everybody was there, spending the night, working together to help our city. They had it set up beautifully. The IT department had all the electronics, the, the screens and the phones and everything. It was just really impressive, and, and again, how fast they coordinated all that. Wednesday, I drove, I got my son-in-law to bring his truck because I wasn't going to sacrifice any vehicle of mine, so he took me, got me as far into town as he could, and what we saw was sheriffs blocking streets. You know, the, the chief, our chief, coordinated with the sheriffs and had extra help covering the streets and blocking flooded areas up. And then we also had National Guard troops here, somebody, I don't know who did that, but somebody coordinated all that together, and, and that was just, just, just to see our city, just, we were dealing with it. Everything was just, you know, we were fighting the effects of the storm, keeping people safe, and that was really, again, impressive. Wednesday evening, I used my most favorite form of transportation, my running shoes, and I ran as up to, into town. And I saw, you know, I went as far as I could on Athens Street, Roosevelt. Street, Roosevelt, saw that downtown was, was being taken care of. I spoke to, I stopped at the fire station over by the, on Gulf Road by the high school, talked to some of the firefighters there that had little or no sleep, but were taking care of things as they needed to be taken care of. And, yeah, obviously you should be really proud of those guys and what, and, and how they behaved, and, and they were selfless. We had no loss of lives. We had a, an amazingly coordinated tragedy that was handled in the most professional way possible. Again, the, and then on Thursday morning, the cleanup, it was by Thursday afternoon, you couldn't even tell that there was a storm in Tarpon Springs. Everything was cleaned up. Your guys were working super-duper early in the morning, because I saw them out there like 5:30 in the morning on, on Thursday, just cleaning everything up. So again, I wanna commend everyone for all they did. We are really fortunate to have a city staff and employees and, and the kind of leadership we have in our town, and I'm extremely proud, and I wanna just give you guys thanks, and Mark, thank you, I know you're the head coordinator of all this, and you deserve an applause. So, thanks.
I'd like to, Chief, both of y'all, as usual, you do an outstanding job, you've got tons of experience, our staff is very experienced, you've got the routine down pat, so I really commend you, and you're absolutely right about the, the webcams, both at the SpongeDocks and at the, at Craig Park, we might wanna think about putting one or two more up around key areas, maybe Sunset Beach or something like that, just to keep an eye on that as well, they're very helpful. And also, I don't know if you mentioned, but the Weatherstem, the public safety building Weatherstem is outstanding in terms of real-time wind and wind gust and rainfall and things. So thank you both for very, do an outstanding job. I'm gonna invite any of the public that'd like to come forward and make a, a comment on this, or ask a question of, of our fire chief.
I need a Protus 901 Bay Shore Drive. I just wanna say, the city, the fire department, the police department, the public works, outstanding, and the talk in the community is this, we don't need an outside city manager. Do away with the, the six months that you've given Mark, let him stay and take care of us as long as he wants to. It shows the proof that we were right in not hiring what came in. We need people who know the community, know how to take care of the community, and we all do. And it was an outstanding job they did, we're, we're happy that Mr. Lund didn't get washed away off of Chesapeake with all the water, and the sad thing was the fire. And I think we need to educate the people a little bit more about the saltwater and the wind, batteries and the fire, for fires, but they're talking now, how wrong it was to try to get Mark to leave. Let him leave of his own accord, watch who you bring to the city, because those two candidates would not have known what to do for Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Pardon me? Did you wanna get up and say something?
I don't know if the commission was opening it up for this presentation or...
This is for the presentation, we're gonna have public comments in a minute.
Okay, well, all right then. Since I'm up, I, too, I actually, I reached out, I reached out to Jeff, and Jeff was supposed to reach out to Scott, which he did not, to thank them for their, for their, what they did for this community. I reached out to Mark to congratulate him. Ironically, I have a lot of friends up in New York, and Tarpon Springs made the national news. They saw the fire, they saw the SpongeDocks flooding, and everybody was calling me, wanted to make sure I was safe, and, and quite frankly, where I live, it was a non-event. I did get a chance to go out and see, and I went to Publix, it was open, I was surprised. But I went out, saw, saw the rising, rising water, I was concerned about the SpongeDocks because, you know, that's their livelihood, I was concerned about those people on the bayou, because, you know, when your home gets flooded, it's, it's, it's chaotic. But I was very impressed, I drove by the fire station, the police station, I was impressed, they had everything staged, ready to go on my way to Publix. And, and you know, and, and I look around and, and it, and I felt a sense of satisfaction that I live, because I was very impressed, I was very impressed, like you said, with the cleanup right after, but, but what I saw, you know, makes me proud that I live here. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments concerning the presentation by Fire Chief Scott Young?
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. First, I'd like to thank both chiefs for what you did before, during, and after the hurricane. Thank you very much. We recently had an incident over at the Pioneer Homes Development off of East Lake and Highland, and I'm gonna speak about that in a moment, but this also fits that situation, because there's only one entrance and exit to that proposed development. Eighty-eight homes are trying to cram in there. Now, this was rammed through this commission before most of you were elected. It's a disaster waiting to happen. It's only one way in and out of there, eighty-eight homes. If the roads flooded, what are they gonna do if there's a fire in there? And there's a lot of wetlands, a lot of lowlands in that property. That is a real problem waiting to happen, and you ought to see it. I mean, that, all of that property was zoned for one house for every two acres. One house for every two acres. Now they're cramming in eighty-eight homes in that.
Mr. Roboski, I'm gonna interrupt you, and if you could save those comments for...
I, I will, I, but the main point I'm making here is about the hurricane preparedness and for the technical review committee and the fire department's input on that. Whenever there's a proposal where there's only gonna be one way in and out of a development, to consider what happened with those mobile homes, and use that information that you just learned to prevent developments to take place when there's gonna be bigger storms, and we dodged a bullet on this one. I mean, we absolutely, it just grazed us. You know, the 74 acres on the Anclou River, how are you gonna get all those people out of there? If those 404 apartments had been built, how are you gonna get a thousand cars out of there on US-19? Hell, the last meeting, two weeks ago, there was an accident on US-19. The traffic was diverted to Alt-19. It took me at lunchtime, an hour to get from Ozona Pig to Closh Monroe, an hour because of that.
Mr. Roboski?
So I'm talking about evacuation during a hurricane, so that, that, these are things that need to be considered, and I'll have more to say afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, thank you very much, Chief. Before we go to public comments, I wanna take care of a little bit of an administrative matter, I'd like to introduce everybody to Ms. Regina Kardashian, she's one of our two city attorneys, Mr. Salsman, you used to see him up here, he was our litigation attorney, Ms. Kardashian is our general counsel. And from now on, we'll be having our meetings at the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and Ms. Kardashian will be sitting into this, sitting in this spot. Over, did you wanna say anything, or?
Just thank you for having me, I do appreciate being here with everybody.
Also, I, I think that last couple of meetings were brought up, I've gotten communications for at least four people, basically putting some of the, what they felt was inappropriate discussions and, and dialogue at my feet, and basically saying that I should be using this more. And that's something I've had conversation with Mrs. Kardashian about concerning that matter, so we're gonna be doing a little bit more of a formal approach to Robert rules. You may be hearing a point of order coming from Ms. Kardashian, and basically a one-word statement as far as what the issue is with regard to the point of order, and I may even be using the gavel to get someone's attention, as I did just now, and although I didn't use the gavel to ask what the relevance says of what was being said to the topic. So we're gonna approach this and see how it goes, but again, I don't know whether it's fair to put it at my feet, but that goes with the territory being mayor, so let's hope for the best and we'll see how it goes. Let's go to public comments.
Talking a lot tonight, Mike Guescutis, 623 East Harpent Avenue. I could tell you, Ms. Kardashian, I sit on the planning and zoning, and you are a gem, and, and I hope this commission appreciates the gem that you have sitting there, so kudos to you. And, 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 and Mr. Mayor, you may have to buy yourself a, a bigger gavel. I, and that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. You know, and, and I don't want anybody to take this personally, but, you know, on, on Tuesday nights, and, and, and tonight's my daughter's birthday, and I decided, I came here, I've gotta go meet them for dinner, because, you know, this has been eating at me, it's important for me to say. I don't necessarily come to commission meetings, but I do get the opportunity to, to watch them on TV later, and, and when I was, been watching these commission meetings, quite honestly, it's like watching a soap opera, and, and that's just not coming from me, it's coming from a lot of people in this community who, who talk with me. One thing I remember, and when Ronald Reagan was elected president, he always wore a suit into the Oval Office, and when they asked him why, he said it was for the respect of the office, and that he was there to do the business of the American people. You were elected to do the business of the city, and not to use your elected office as a personal attack platform. Sometimes it seems that you lose sight of the city's business, so you can attack each other. Do that on your own time and not on the city's time. You need to raise the bar. I know this is not the White House, nor is it the Oval Office, but this is the Oval Office of Tarpon Springs. Respect each other, and when you walk into this building, do the business of the city that you were elected to do, and remember, raise the bar, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guescutis. Next, please.
Thank you, David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live at 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Again, the first sentence of Federalist Paper Number One abridges into a second Constitution. The Federalist Papers again reveals three constitutions in total, seen as the former, the latter, and the last resort. The preamble of this Constitution reveals two constitutions stating the United States and the United States of America, one being posterior of the other. Article Six states that this Constitution is under this Constitution as under the Confederacy, the Declaration of Independence in perpetuity, when in the course of human events serves as preamble to Hamilton's Second Constitution. So as the political climate changes itself from this Constitution to this Constitution, the Declaration of Independence states to burn down the town, to ravage the coasts, to destroy the lives of our people, revealing that this government is here to eat us out of our subsistence to complete perfidy and works of death scarcely paralleled in the most barbaric of ages declaring that they are free to levy war, making reference to this Constitution as the present history of the King of Great Britain, calling this Constitution pretentious and arbitrary, and that the British have hired mercenaries, savages, savage mercenaries known for their absolute destruction of all ages and conditions, here to commit murders on the inhabitants of the people of these states. Some people speculate that the fire in Hawaii last week was no accident, claiming that the fire in reality was an actual invasion seen based in Article One, Section 10 of this current Constitution, used as a means to capture both land and water, seen in Article One, Section Eight, Clause 11, using fire as a sword of warfare, again, as stated in Federalist Paper Number One. The fire in the Hawaiian Islands of Maui killed over 100 people, with another 800 people presumed to be incinerated by the fire, making the death toll of almost 1,000 people that were burned alive. The governor of Hawaii blames such fire on climate change. Oddly, I feel that the climate change he is referring to is a political climate that is changing, and that the fire was a tactic of warfare levied against the unsuspecting indigenous population of Hawaii levied by an arbitrary, undistinguished government playing both sides of a constitutional coin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddes.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. CS, once again, we had an incident at the proposed Pioneer Homes Development, East Lake and Highland. We got tipped off, they were ripping out trees and other vegetation over there with heavy machinery, crews of people running around, tearing up the land, and we contacted all the agencies involved, and they did not have their Fish and Wildlife permit, according to FWC at that time. So I'd like to ask if there was any follow-up on that with the city? Did anybody find out? Did they in fact ever get their permits? Did they have the right to do what they were doing? Since then, the machinery has just been sitting there idle, so, but they've already torn out things that it appears they did not have the right to do. And again, as I said, it was originally one home for every two acres of land that was supposed to be in the overlay of that entire region, that was state, county combined, that decided that should be agricultural. But the previous commission here went ahead and let them put in 88 homes, that's less than a home for every, like, quarter acre or something. Now, if they had done it the right way, slowly over time, developing a two-acre lot and putting a home in there over time, the natural wildlife of that region would've had a chance to survive, they would've acclimated. But no, even on my way over there that afternoon, I saw dead animals on the road fleeing the destruction. It was horrible. ABC News was there, about six officers from Fish and Wildlife were there, and the crews fled into the woods. It was horrible, and they were doing it illegally. I contacted the city, and I don't know what you can do about it, but I suspect there's something that can be done, there must be a procedure that the city can put into place to make sure these people follow the rules. I mean, why would they be allowed to kill all this wildlife? They don't even have a permit. It doesn't make any sense. I mean, that project should've never been approved, and I'm certain this board would not have approved it. But as it is, now we're gonna have to fight every permit along the way, and that will happen, to prevent further death and destruction. I mean, that land should've never been annexed, so it was illegally annexed and illegally granted a development order. And then they went in and decided, since they were getting away with breaking all those laws, they'd just go in and wreck the place without having any permits that they needed. You know, the word's gotta get out that there's a new sheriff in town. You know, the word's got to get out that there's a new sheriff in town, that there's a new board that's actually going to make people do stuff right. Because some still think they can do it the old way. Some of these developers still think they just can willy-nilly tear the place apart. Because apparently nobody's doing anything about it. I suggest you do something about it. There won't be anything left, otherwise. Somebody has to stand up and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening. Peter Lachas, 514 Ashland Avenue. Welcome, Ms. Kardashian. And now that we have two ladies on the dais, maybe that will influence the board to have a little more civility in front of the ladies. So, tonight's reading, some of it. Psalm Nine. "I will praise you, O Lord, with all my heart. I will tell you of all your wonders. I will be glad and rejoice in you. I will sing praise to your name, O mighty high. My enemies turn back; they stumble and perish before you, for you have upheld my right and my cause. You have sat on your throne, judging righteously. You have rebuked the nations and destroyed the wicked; you have blotted out their name forever and ever. Endless ruin has overtaken the enemy. You have uprooted their cities; even the memory of them has perished. The Lord reigns forever; he has established his throne for judgment. He will judge the world in righteousness, and he will govern the people with justice. Those who know your name will trust in you, for you, Lord, have never forsaken those who seek you." And Isaiah 41:10. "So do not fear, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you; I will uphold you with my righteous right hand. All who rage against you will surely be ashamed and disgraced; those who oppose you will be as nothing and perish. Though you search for your enemies, you will not find them; those who wage war against you will be nothing at all. For I am the Lord, your God, who takes hold of your right hand and says to you, 'Do not fear; I will help you.'" We do not fear momentary losses in battle, but our mission is undaunted. We will continue our pursuit. For God has not brought us this far to fail. And I would also like to say that with regards to the presentation, Commissioner Kulianis mentioned something about Mark getting credit. I think we have to look at the history of the Emergency Management Center. I believe it was Ms. Possavich who first put it in, but Mark took it to another level. People need to know that this emergency center has been an example for many that have followed behind us. So, you do have the potential with vision to be trailblazers. Do not let that vision be limited. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And I do have a raised hand and I'll allow the first person in.
Hello?
Yes, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Honorable Commissioners, this is Mark Washburn, the President of SafeTarponSprings.org, a 501(c)(4) social welfare organization. And I live at 124 East Lake Drive in Tarpon, 34688. So, let me firstly, with this current commission, that you guys are fantastic in most ways. Some of the infighting is weird, but okay. You guys really are a breath of fresh air compared to the last group and our organization and membership really appreciates it. The decision made about the McAlpin property, it was huge and we noticed. It's going to make a difference to avoid conflicts between, of course, us agriculturally zoned people with acreage and the density of the city. But moving on to something that happened before this commission was elected. Last week Pioneer Homes, George Stammas and George Suits, did something awful and possibly criminal. They started land clearing on the second largest all-natural property left in North Pinellas. It's 45 acres located between East Lake Drive, North Highland Ave, and George Street. I know they've been in business since at least 1999 and probably longer before that. In 1999, they hired me to design a website for their Ankhloiles Marina, and by the way, they never paid me for it, but I know they were around at least at that point. So, they know, they should know what they're doing. For some reason, they ignored the requirement for having a current Go for Tortoise survey and did not have any permit from FWC to begin land clearing. Luckily, an alert resident figured this out quickly. I called FWC, who dispatched three deputies, and since ABC Action News was onsite doing a story about it, they sent their informational officer as well to be interviewed. Luckily, all construction was immediately stopped and all the workers quickly jumped into their vehicles and disappeared, which was kind of strange, except for the foreman. And of course, one of the tortoises showed up. So, all construction is stopped, a few acres were cleared. Sadly, I don't know how many of the tortoises were killed in the process. But current status, FWC won't comment at the moment as Pioneer Homes is under criminal investigation, but we look forward to a sufficient punishment, especially since George and George really should have known better.
Mr. Washburn, Mr. Washburn, your time is up. Could you wrap up your thoughts in over a couple of seconds?
Yes, sir. There are some issues that were waivers that were granted. There's one waiver in particular that we need more information on. Hopefully, Mark provide us with information offline. And the key is this. They are being allowed to build 88 homes on 44 acres, 44.5 acres. And they're using the ability to build in-law homes along with regular homes on each property, which is illegal in the city, but legal in the county. But since now the land's annexed into the city, we don't understand how they're allowed to build 88 homes. And we'd really like an answer to why that is, and that would be a fantastic thing, so.
Thank you. Mr. Jumper, anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobs, we have one.
Yes, we have one. This is from Robin Sanger, 1630 Lonesome Pine Lane, Tarpon Springs. Dear Mayor and Board of Commissioners and City Manager, I wanted to be with you in person this evening to speak during public comment, but unfortunately have another meeting at that time. I thank you for your attention, as this is read aloud. On July 20th, I had the honor of being invited to speak and share the work of Peace for Tarpon at a congressional hearing regarding the Community Mental Wellness Resilience Act of 2023. This proposed act has bipartisan support. There were 1,300 registrants and capacity attendance. Five communities from across the nation were featured, including two in North Carolina, the state of Virginia, Walla Walla, Washington, and of course, Tarpon Springs, Peace for Tarpon. It was so successful that a follow-up hearing was requested once again. I'm invited to share the community work we are doing here in Tarpon Springs. This second congressional hearing will be held on September 21st from 12 to 1:30. I hope you are all able to attend. Community initiatives such as ours are increasingly being seen as having great potential to help address the growing need for community mental wellness and resilience. Please feel free to register and share the link with interested colleagues. That's the flyer that's sitting on your desk. Best regards, Robin Sanger, founding director, Peace for Tarpon.
All righty. Let's close the public comments and we've got five minutes before we go to the ordinances and resolutions. Let's see if we can address the consent agenda before then. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of the nine items? Okay. Let me run through the consent agenda. Number one, special events, Tarpon Springs Band Boosters Outdoor Music Festival. B, Back to School Ego Fest. Number two, Renew File Number 20024 Technology Solutions with related equipment accessories. Number three, Renew File 210090 Manhole Structures Rehabilitation. Number four, Renew File Number 21020202. Aftermarket Vehicle Parts and Supplies. Number five, Renew File Number 220078 Microsoft License Maintenance and Services. Number six, Award File Number 230213 Single Source Purchase of 100-horse Peerless Vertical Turbine Pump Motor. Number seven, Award File Number 230214 Cure and Place Pipeline and Point Repair Services. Number eight, Award File Number 230215 Blue Star 250-kilowatt Trailer Mounted Generator. Number nine, Award File Number 230218 Hydraulic Repair Parts and Service. I have a, what I'm going to do is go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning any of these nine items? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to approve and a second for the nine items. So moved.
Second.
Okay. If there's no further commission comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes. Okay, we've got three minutes before the resolutions and ordinances that we have to begin, so I'm just going to pause here for a couple of minutes. Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the ordinances and resolutions. Item 12 is an application 21170, and it actually involves three ordinances and basically they're do-overs because of an error in the legal description of the previous ordinances that were approved by the commission. So, I'm going to, this is also quasi-judicial process, so I'm going to ask the, the way we're going to do this is to key off the first ordinance, which would be the Annexation 2023112. Listen to that and then also include that discussion and comments and public comments as part of B and C, and we'll do those individually after we finish with that first ordinance, 2023-12 Annexation. So, Ms. Kardashian, I'm going to ask you to read Ordinance 2023-12 Annexation by title only, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2023-12, Adornance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing 0.92 acres, more or less, of real property located at 38652 US Highway 19 North, on the northwest corner of US Highway 19 North and Klosterman Road, Application 21-170. Repealing Ordinance 2022-03, Providing for Findings and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, if you could provide us the instructions for the quasi-judicial process and also swear in anybody that's here as a witness, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This matter pending before the City of Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners is quasi-judicial in nature. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission's function is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordnances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the commission. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application and the applicable code sections. If the evidence demonstrates that the application meets the criteria contained in the Code of Ordnances, then the commission is required by law to grant the applicant's request. If the evidence demonstrates that the application does not meet the code criteria, then the commission is required to deny the applicant's request. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate whether or not they have been sworn for the record prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the application based on the city's Code of Ordnances. At this time, if there are any commissioners or the mayor who has disclosures such as ex parte communications or conflicts of interest, please make your disclosures now.
Any?
All right, seeing none. The following is the established procedure, which will be followed at this quasi-judicial hearing. First will be the staff's presentation and the opportunity to ask questions and cross-examine city staff. Then, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their witnesses and evidence, and the city will have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant and any of the applicant's witnesses. Then, members of the public opposing or in support of the application will be given the opportunity to provide their testimony and evidence. And then, the applicant and the city may present any rebuttal testimony for consideration. At this time, anybody who's going to be saying anything regarding this application, please stand and be sworn. Do you swear to tell the truth on this matter before the city's Board of Commissioners this evening?
I do.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to also ask whether there's any affected parties here. Okay, thank you. City Manager La Corso, I want to go ahead and get started with Ms. Vincent.
Yes, Ms. Vincent, give the presentation. Thank you. Good evening, Renee Vincent, Planning and Zoning Director. As the mayor correctly stated, this application is actually a set of rehearings simply to correct errors in legal descriptions. It had a bit of a cascading effect from the annexation through the future land use and the zoning applications on this property, as well as the very small billboard property that was processed at the same time. So, this is a subject site. It's the car wash, it's there, it's existing, it's completed at Klosterman and US 19. So, the readoption consists of, as I said, is the annexation of the .92 acres, a future land use map amendment from the Pinellas County Designation of Residential Officer Retail to the City of Tarpon Springs Commercial General, and a rezoning from Pinellas County Designation of Commercial Parkway to the city zoning designation of highway business. As I stated, back in October of last year, the board took action on these, to annex and apply the land use and zoning on this property. And there was an error with the legal descriptions. So, this process simply is to correct that, and in doing so, it will also allow the billboard and parcel, which is right here, to, for those annexation land use and zoning ordinances to become effective as well. So, I'm just going to kind of jump to the end of this. The Planning and Zoning Board did review this on August 21st and did recommend approval of all three of the ordinances. And the staff recommendation, excuse me, I didn't mean to click that forward, is to approve Ordinance 2023. mean to click that forward, is to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three, annexing the property, ordinance twenty twenty-three, amending the future land use map, and ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, amending the zoning atlas. And so they'll answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Vincent? Okay, Ms. Vincent, the applicant is not here, is that correct?
The city is actually the applicant, so, in this instance.
You'd like the staff report accepted into evidence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We don't have an applicant here this evening. We do not have affected parties. I'm going to go ahead and close the, or let's go to public comments and see if any, the public have any comments concerning this matter. Mr. Gettys?
Yes, thanks, thank you again, David Ballard, Gettys Junior, Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor. I believe I've asked this question before regarding water usage at the car wash. Do they use city water? Do they have their own well point where they draw their own water? Do they use a mixture of reclaimed water as, as the water usage there is exorbitant? I believe there's concerns regarding water use and where they get it from.
Ms. Vincent, can you, I know that was asked before, but do we have an answer for that?
So they, they do have city services there. Just generally speaking, car washes, they are required through their permitting to recycle their water, so it's not reclaimed water. They recycle their water a multitude of times and filter it and reuse it. So it dramatically reduces the potable water use on the property.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, would you like to make a closing or a summation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and I'm going to ask whether any of the commissioners have any comments before we go to a motion. I'm sorry, question, comments before we go to a motion in a second. Any comments?
Yes, Mayor, will the, the motions include, as advised by staff, the repealing of the other ordinances inside them?
So the ordinance itself, the text of the ordinance, it operates to repeal the previous ordinance, so you don't need anything separate.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further comments from the commission, may I have a motion to approve and a second, please? So moved.
Second.
And this is to confirm that this is ordinance two zero two three dash one two for the annexation. If there's no further comments from the commission, roll call, please.
I just wanted to announce for the record, if the ordinance is approved on its first reading, the second will be held on September nineteenth of twenty twenty-three. And this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on August second and September sixth. Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes, okay, let's move on to ordinance, item B, ordinance two zero two three dash ten, future land use map amendment. Ms. Kardashian, can you read that by ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for zero point nine two acres, more or less, of real property located at three eight six five two U.S. Highway Nineteen North on the northwest corner of U.S. Highway Nineteen North and Klosterman Road from Pinellas County Land Use Designation ROR Residential Office Retail to City of Tarpon Springs Land Use Designation CG Commercial General. Application number twenty-one dash one seventy. Repealing ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four, providing for findings and providing an effective date. This is first reading, the second reading will be held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on August second and tomorrow, September sixth. For this one, I would request a motion of the commission to incorporate the presentation of staff from the last ordinance so that your planning director doesn't have to go through it for both this one and the next one and then just move directly into public comment.
Okay, for clarification, would be motion to approve with the proviso that we include the staff presentation as part of the amendment?
Uh, no, I would like that.
Are two separate ones?
I would like two separate motions because you want to have the motion to accept that evidence upfront.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion to accept the staff's presentation with regard to ordinance two zero two three dash ten, future land use map amendment, and a second to that.
So moved. Second.
If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes, okay, item C, ordinance two zero, I'm sorry, we need to go ahead and have a motion to approve ordinance.
You actually do need to open it up for public comment as well.
We do, okay. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and now if there's no commission comments concerning this ordinance, then I'd like to have a motion to approve ordinance two zero two three dash one zero, the future land use map amendment. So moved.
Second.
If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Did you say Kulias or Kulianis?
You go first.
Kulianis.
All right.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes, okay, ordinance two zero two three dash one one, rezoning. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read that by title, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Tarpon Springs for zero point nine two acres, more or less, of real property located at three eight six five two U.S. Highway Nineteen North on the northwest corner of U.S. Highway Nineteen North and Klosterman Road from Pinellas County Zoning Designation CP Commercial Parkway to City of Tarpon Springs Zoning Designation HB Highway Business. Application number twenty-one dash one seventy. Repealing ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh five, providing for findings and providing an effective date. This is first reading, the second reading will be held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on August second, twenty twenty-three, and tomorrow, September sixth, twenty twenty-three. Similar to the last one, the same motion to incorporate the evidence.
Right, we have a motion to incorporate the evidence, the staff report for this ordinance, two zero two, two zero two three dash one one rezoning.
So moved. Second.
If there's no further comments from the commission, oh, hang on, public comments, are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, if there's no public, or if there's no, I'm going to close the public meeting, if there's no comments from the commission, we have a motion to approve ordinance two zero two three dash one one rezoning in a second, please. Didn't I just do that? Pardon me? Didn't we just do that?
That was to incorporate the evidence.
No, not that one. So moved. Got you.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Kulianis, okay. If there's no further comments from the commission, roll call, please.
Okay, we didn't have roll call on the first one motion, so I'll do that first. This was to incorporate the evidence, staff report. Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes, so we didn't, we need to adopt the ordinance now?
Yes, this is for that.
Separate ordinance, uh, separate.
Second motion.
Okay, is there a second motion, I'm sorry, a motion and a second to approve ordinance two zero two three dash eleven for the rezoning?
Second.
All right, if there's no commission comments, we've done public comments, if there's no commission comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes.
Okay, that ends that item, thank you, Ms. Vincent. We're going to move on to resolution two zero two three dash two seven. Application two three seven four, it's conditional use for one twenty-two West Cedar Street. This is also a quasi judicial hearing. Ms. Kardashian, if we could have the resolution read by title, the instructions for the quasi judicial proceeding and also the question concerning ex parte and voting conflicts and also swearing any witnesses in.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
In your order.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number twenty-three dash seventy-four, requesting conditional use approval to allow for a single-family dwelling at one two two West Cedar Street, Lot Eleven, in the WDI Waterfront Development District, zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date.
Okay.
This matter pending before the City of Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners is quasi judicial in nature. In a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission's function is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the commission. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application and the applicable code sections. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate whether or not they have been sworn for the record prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the application based on the city's Code of Ordinances. At this time, any commissioner or the mayor who has either ex parte or conflict of interest disclosures, please make your disclosures now.
Okay, any commissioner have anything? Ex parte, voting conflict, okay, I don't have any ex parte, but there was a question concerning the voting conflict of interest. I am considered an affected party by the Planning Department rules. I had a conversation with Ms. Kardashian concerning the details and circumstances of that and under our state statutes, I would not be considered to have a voting conflict of interest.
That's correct, under chapter one twelve, just your proximity to this particular parcel does not in and of itself create a conflict. You don't have any direct financial interest in this application based on our discussion and review. And neither do you have any business interest in this particular application. Therefore, it doesn't constitute a legal conflict of interest that would preclude you from voting and require you to file the disclosure. And at this hearing, are you still able to make a fair and impartial decision based on the testimony and evidence that is presented this evening?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and swear in any witnesses who are going to speak on this particular matter. Please stand if you're going to speak on this and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth on the matters before the city commission on this application here this evening?
I do.
Okay, please make sure you state your name and address when you come up to speak and indicate that you've been sworn.
Okay, Ms. Vin, uh, City Manager LaCorne?
Ms. Vincent?
Thank you, again, this is application twenty-three dash seventy-four. This is a conditional use request for a small infill, single-family lot that is in the WD one zoning district at one twenty-two West Cedar Street. The WD one zoning district is primarily a working waterfront type of designation, but when it was established back in the, many years ago, that it did allow for conditional uses, one of the conditional uses, that use of a single-family residence. So that's what's being asked for here today. The property contains a little over thirty-five hundred square feet, so it's a very small infill lot, it's a very old plat for this area historically. The proposed use of the property is a two-story dwelling with a garage parking under the main living space. The ground floor is approximately four hundred fifty square feet and the upper floor is fourteen seventy-five and the ground floor is the living area. This is the location, so this is Athan Street, so this is West Cedar, this is the lot. Primarily residential surrounding the area. And just a little bit better aerial photograph with no zoning overlaid on top of it. So this is the site layout. Importantly, the, the property did receive variance approvals from the Board of Adjustments, one to establish it as a non-conforming lot of record, basically meaning that it's an original planted lot of record, but it does not meet today's standards in terms of lots' size, width, or area. So the Board of Adjustments has the ability to recognize those lots, they did. They also approved reduced setbacks, a front setback of sixteen feet and a rear setback of ten feet. So that has been provided for by the Board of Adjustments. These are the floor plans, again, this is a little different, difficult to see, but you'll have a staircase entry, your garage, and then a small first-floor living area and then, and then your kind of a full second-story living area. So these are the proposed elevations. Again, so this is your front door leading into your stairs going to the second floor, obviously your garage. Just some additional elevations. I think the, the applicant may, may wish to speak more to some of the, some of the additional architectural elements that they are, may want to implement through the building process. So as we stated, the, the property's been zoned WD one since nineteen seventy-six. There are a lot of permitted uses by right that are very, you know, obviously commercial in nature, which would really be not in keeping, you know, with this surrounding area as it's been developed. There are approximately, the WD one property, the zoning is a bit of a holdover now. A lot of the area that was WD one was incorporated into the special area plan in the SMART code, but we do have some of these remnant areas where the zoning still does exist. So of those, you know, most were built in the nineteen twenties. We do have, there is a home directly next door that was built in two thousand and seven with a single-family house. And then again, just the surrounding context, the property is in what would be the Greek Town National Register Historic Traditional Cultural District. Again, that district does establish cultural significance but does not have design guidelines at this time, so there's nothing to apply with respect to that at this point in time. And just some site photos. As you can see, the area is very, you know, single-family oriented. So under the conditional use criteria, they, they do have approval for the reduced setbacks by the Board of Adjustments, but in all other aspects, it will meet the standards of the Land Development Code, specifically building, fire, and FEMA flipping requirements. There's an elevation difference that has to be made up here to get the first floor above base flood elevation. We don't have any, see any concerns with the impacts on surrounding areas. This is predominantly single-family residential, consistency with the comprehensive plan and should not adversely in fact impact historical or environmental resources. Again, as we talked about, this is in the Greek Town Traditional Cultural Property District, which does recognize the cultural history of the area, but again, at this point, does not establish design regulations for new development. We don't think this will adversely affect property values, definitely will not affect the ability of the city to provide public facilities and is, no issues with public health, safety, and welfare and efficient, efficient and orderly development. Staff recommendation is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven with a condition that a building permit for the construction of the single-family dwelling shall be obtained within one year of the effective date. Planning and Zoning Board did review this on August twenty-first and recommended by a five of vote to approve, including the following conditions. The building permit for the construction of the single-family dwelling shall be obtained within one year, and they did add a condition that the dwelling shall function as a single-family unit with common utilities. So there's some discussion about a little bit of separation of uses between the first floor and the second floor, second floor being the primary, single-family. The ground floor, that four hundred square foot area is more, it's not, it's not a separate living unit, but there was some discussion about, could it be that in the future as an accessory dwelling unit? So this was a point of discussion that the board did want to ensure that the dwelling, you know, functions as a single-family unit with common utilities. There was one person who spoke in favor and one member of the public who spoke in opposition to the request. So with that, I will stop and answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay. Does the commission have? Does the commission have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Renee, how many parking spaces between the driveway and the garage can the household?
Between? With the reduced setback on the front of, if they build to the front setback that was approved by the Board of Adjustments, I just want to make sure I have this right, I think it's 16 feet. So in reality, yeah, 16, 16 feet, it would not be recognized really as a legal parking spot, if you will, so if they were going to park in that driveway, it's probably going to overhang the sidewalk. So their parking is reliant upon the garage for the, to meet the required parking.
Okay, and by the measures, is it a one-parking garage or two-car garage?
It's a two-car garage.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kulianis, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Renee, are, I see on the overhead slide, the, there's trees coming onto the lot. Are those trees going to be removed? Any of those trees removed?
The, I was out visiting the site today, and there's one that looks like a prominent tree in the back that is actually on the adjoining property. If that was, is concerned, I need to look at the, let me look at the, see if they have the tree removals. It looks like, looking at the overhead or at the survey, there may be, it doesn't appear that they need to remove any trees. If they do, it would be, I think there's a, let's see, there's a palm tree that might have to come out, but the trees in the rear are largely not affected, so.
How about the big one towards Athan Street? Towards that?
The one that's over, it's, yeah, that right there.
That, that's on the adjoining property.
Okay. So they would have to cut that tree back to be able to build that house?
They would work that out with, you talk about the fact that the canopy overhangs.
Right.
The, they'll have to work that out between the property owners as to whether or not they need to impact that canopy as part of the construction.
And I see that there's only five-foot setbacks on both sides. So how close will they be to the large house on Cedar Street?
Join anyone?
Yeah, because if they're only going to have, they're only having five-foot setbacks.
I believe they'll have 10 feet between houses there. Five feet on each, on each lot is what's required.
About 10 feet?
About 10 feet between houses.
And how does that compare with other homes in, in the area? Are there any other homes that are that tight?
Yes.
There are?
Yeah.
Okay. I know this may not be in your department. Do we have any idea when we will have a report on the architectural guidelines for the area?
At least not until the, the end of the year, you know, from the consultant, and then what we decide to do with, you know, there's, there's work, a lot of work left to be done on that. I wouldn't expect anything informative until, again, until we get probably toward the end of the year as to whether or not we're going to try to move forward with design guidelines, if it's going to be a conservation overlay, or what it might be.
In your opinion, does this, the architectural design of this house fit in with the neighborhood?
If you look around the neighborhood, you will see other similar, you know, the house, there's a house next door. Again, that's all, that's a, that's a difficult question to answer because there's not a predominant architectural style in this area because it's been developed over so many years, and that's part of the issue. I don't want to weigh in as to whether or not I think that this comports with, because we don't have design guidelines, whether or not this comports with, you know, the area overall. It's, it's a single-family house.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. This is the WDI, is that correct? And it's just that?
WD1, WDI, I hear it both ways, yes.
Just that strip along the Athan Street, is that right?
So everything that's in this, kind of this light blue.
WDI.
Is WDI, and as well as back in these areas.
Was this the same zoning as the Anclode Isles?
Across the river.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that one, we rezoned to, I think it was an R100?
We, yeah, we rezoned that entire subdivision to R78 or something, I can't remember now, to single-family.
Is there some, I mean, it was, Ms. Kardashian and I had a very brief conversation about this, and it, is there, we did this a long time ago, and there was a reason for that. I don't even think you were on board at that time, which would have been in the early 2000 timeframe.
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why we shouldn't look at that and rezone it more appropriately like we did Anclode Isles?
I think this entire area probably needs to, to, to me, it really wants to be part of the special area plan in the SMART code, so we can look at, look at it as a unique area and put in appropriate setbacks and, and, you know, controls and things of that nature. So yes, that is something that, and I think that will come out of the, out of the overall historic study that's going on. One of the things that we asked them to look at was the, you know, the special area plan is, and the character districts, and is, is that an appropriate mechanism to, for the future for this area? So yes, it does. This area is a real hodgepodge of stuff. You have R60, you've got WD1, you've got multifamily, but in reality, a lot of it, most of it is just single-family detached, so it does need some attention.
And I don't recall, is that part of the tasking for the Greektown Cultural District, the character district?
It was to look at all, yes.
Would you look at that?
Yeah, to look at the different regulations and how, how we can amend things to achieve whatever the end goal becomes.
Okay. I know.
Yes.
We've gone a long ways from that to the special area plan, to now we're dealing with remnants of that.
Sure.
The other question I had was the two kitchens. I recall at one time, two kitchens were not allowed in a single-family residence. Have we departed from that?
This does not meet, the, the ground floor, because it does not have a stove in it by the building code, does not constitute a separate living unit, so.
Okay, that's good. And then the, and then I want to also ask, just for everybody from, for, actually my education, conditional uses are by right or by conditional use for this vacation homes or by short-term rentals, I should say?
The short-term rentals are conditional use in the WD1.
Okay, so that would be a separate item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think it was already asked, we really don't have any other, there are no, this fits with all the ordinances that we have on board at this time?
It does, yes.
Okay, and it's very similar to the observations that were made for the, for the Galeracus, I want to call it the snack bar that's going to be there on Athan Street. There was some interest in, I think it was the vernacular at that time.
Right.
It was a question of asking the commission whether we include that, and I think it was Commissioner Kulianis says, well, there isn't, or, or could we? And then I think your point was, we could, but who's going to be the judge of whether it fits with that? So we have no guidelines for that either.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. That's my questions. I've got a couple of lights on. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Renee, just two quick questions. Where the AC platform is going to be, is that going to be elevated? Because with a five-foot setback, you will not be able to utilize that side of the house.
They can, utilities are allowed to be in that required side yard. So they theoretically could. I'll, I don't, let me look at the, let me look at the plan and see if they show where their AC unit's going to be.
Because it looks like it's in the back right. Or maybe that's just a doorway to walk out with a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think that's just a door, that's just a doorway, sidewalk.
So do we know where the AC?
Oh, no, I, I don't know, I don't know where the AC is going to be. Again, it's a conditional use, it's not a building print, it level detail, I can defer to the applicant, but I can tell you that AC units may be allowed in a side yard setback. Obviously, if they need to be elevated, they need to be elevated, otherwise it'll have to go in a rear yard.
My other question, thank you, was what was the public complaint at the other meeting?
It was, it was again about the upcoming potential for design requirements for the, and waiting until something, waiting until we have whatever that might be coming out of the, the evaluation of the cultural district and future design guidelines, so deferring action until that, till that time.
Okay. Thank you much. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor La, you have your light on.
Yeah, hi, Renee. It's hard for me to tell from a 5,000-foot view from the NHC slosh map, but is this in the coastal high hazard area?
Yes, it is.
If it's in the coastal high hazard area, how and why are we allowing any first-floor living space, period?
Well, just because it's in the coastal high hazard, they, that first floor still, that living space still has to be elevated above one, base flood elevation plus one, so it, they, that's just a requirement.
Okay, so it's going to, I didn't see any elevation things in here. It's going to be at BFE plus one?
The, the living space has to be at BFE plus one. The garage can be lower, so, you know, the applicant might be able to provide a little more, you know, input on to, you know, are you going stepping up?
Yeah, I don't see a floor diagram, so that would be my only concern, the fact it's in the CHAA, I think, by the look of this map anyway, and I just want to make sure that they're not one of the people that were.
Evacuating later on.
Getting flooded out the next time we get brushed.
Absolutely. So that, no, all the, the living space will have to be, they'll have to meet FEMA regulations, it'll have to be base flood elevation plus one for us in Pinellas County.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Yes.
Ms. Kardashian?
Are you offering the city's file for the commission's consideration as evidence in this matter?
Yes, ma'am.
And then also, just for the record, Mayor, I wanted to clarify because you said we had a discussion about this. Our discussion was not specifically about the application itself. It was about the efficacy of the WDI district just generally.
Basically, a question of how in the world did it come around?
Yes.
It was a long time ago, so.
It goes back to 1976.
Thank you, Ms. Kardashian, for clarifying that.
Sure.
Okay, let me get back. All right, I'm going to ask the applicants, do you have any cross-examination for Ms. Vincent, any questions that you might have of her concerning her presentation?
My name's Tom Zabat, 122 West Cedar Street, and I'm the applicant, and I thank you for your time. I can answer any of the questions.
Let me just make sure, these would just be specific questions for Ms. Vincent and her presentation? You'll be able to get to say your own piece. Do you have anything for Ms. Vincent?
Sure. As far as the distance of the house, that's right to the east of it, that's my current location, that's my residence. That house is, according to the, the survey, it's about eight feet from the lot line, so it plus five and a half or so, because the house is only 26 foot wide, so there'd be at least five and a half on that side of the house, so it's more than five feet. The sidewalk issue, there isn't a sidewalk on that side of the street. I don't know if something's going to be proposed. It'd be very hard to put one in on that side of the street, and that would add an additional 10 feet in the driveway, so it's 26 feet from the street to the front of the garage would be the proposed. On that, I'm trying to think. Air conditioning, you know, we haven't, these are preliminary plans, we haven't gotten into the final plans and figuring it all out. I'm trying to get it so that I can put the steps interior instead of exterior, because I think it looks better. It does take up a lot of space in the interior of the home, so the square footage that's up there isn't quite correct. It's about 1,400, take off 100 for the steps inside, it's about 1,300, a little over 1,300 upstairs and about 500 downstairs, so that's, that's total. And the downstairs elevation will be the flood plain plus one, which makes it nine foot. Has to be a minimum nine feet. That living will be nine feet or above on that. The garage is enclosed, and something about the air conditioning units, we have not figured out where that's going to be placed at this point, but I did check with the planning and zoning, and they said that I could put it on the west side of the house, that it would not affect it by the five foot, as long as I kept it up nine foot, or not nine feet, yeah, nine feet, nine feet above ceiling, so.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Vincent, would you like your staff report read into, or accepted into evidence?
Yeah, Ms. Kardashian already did that, yes.
Now, would you like to have anything else that you would like to add to what you've just said as far as the presentation?
Sure, just a, just a quick comment, that Cedar Street is primarily residential. There's no commercial businesses on Cedar Street per se. On the corner of Cedar and Alternate 19, there are, but nothing on Cedar Street, it's all residential properties. I don't, and every neighbor that I've talked to doesn't want to have a commercial property built on this property, so that's why I'm asking for residential variance on that, so. That's it.
Okay, let me ask the commission whether you have, any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Vice Mayor La?
None. Commissioner Kulianis? Yes, so, sir, just wanted, actually looking over the map and the driveway, a portion of it is about 27 feet away from the sidewalk, and as the angle comes closer to the road, that's about the 16 feet setback for that front driveway.
Yeah, and then there's a 10-foot easement also to the road. You have a 10-foot easement to the road, that's, that's the easement that where people can put their utilities and whatnot, so it's a total of 26 feet is the closest it would be to the road. Farther on the, on the west side, but on the east side, it's 26 feet to the road from the house.
Yes, sir, and I just wanted to ask you a question on our Ferris Boulevard, does it, as you come down south, previously there have been businesses there before? Just, are you aware of potentially there, there could be any businesses on our Ferris behind your backyard over there?
Yeah, there could be. There could be. The second, the second building in on our Ferris there is, it used to be a business years ago, it's been closed, and it's being renovated, so yeah, that could happen. That could happen.
Thank you, sir, just wanted to run it by you.
Yeah. Ms. Kardashian?
Yes, I did have an additional question. It wasn't something that was discussed at the planning and zoning board meeting, but it was kind of highlighted by the commissioner's question regarding the garage space. I know in coastal areas, a lot of times, there is a code requirement for a non-conversion agreement for those areas that are in the flood plain. I am unaware of whether or not there is one that exists currently in the Tarpon Code?
To my knowledge, we do not have those. It's something that we might want to investigate in the future.
Would you be adverse to the commission putting a second condition on here? That would be for a non-conversion agreement to be executed and recorded in the public records. What that would do is it would ensure that the garage space that you have built down there could never be converted into living space, which would actually be in violation of our code anyway, but due to the fact that it's a space that isn't readily visible after you've constructed the residence, I think it would be best to have that non-conversion agreement on record. Would you be adverse to that?
No, as long as it's just the garage space.
It would just be for the garage space, correct?
Two-car garage, I, no.
Yeah.
I don't have plans for that.
And it's specifically actually to protect the property from any sort of flood damage?
It's going to be at a lower elevation anyhow. It's only, I'd like to get it to seven feet, but it's probably going to be six and a half feet or so, but it's, so it wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to put live in there, even if I wanted to, but.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kardashian. Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Ms. Vincent, do you have any cross-examination?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed into the hall. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you have any closing summation?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to go to commissioners and see if there's any comments from any of the commissioners, comments, not questions. Any comments?
You know, I'm, with regards to the fact that it's within a specific area, like the WDI area, I think this is a perfect fit for the neighborhood. It's adjacent to the person's property anyway. It seems to fit within the neighborhood. It may not fit completely within the quote-unquote Greektown vernacular type of construction that we've heard so much about, but I think it's a good idea. I think we should move over to it.
All right, any? All right, any other commission comments? Commissioner Kulianis?
Isn't Attorney Kardashian great? I worked with her on the P&amp;Z, and she always had something helpful to suggest, so. I concur what the vice mayor said. I, I, I'm slightly tempted to ask for a deferral till this architectural design thing is done. However, I don't think that would be fair to the applicant right now, since we don't really know when that's going to happen. I think it's probably, I mean, it's tight, but it's pretty much all you can do with a lot that size. So I think I would go ahead and approve it.
There any other commission comments?
Yeah, I'm looking to support this application tonight. I do see on Athen Street, there have been several new buildings that have been put up, constructed with very similar setbacks to nearby properties, and I'm thankful that the applicant's willing to support the, from the advice that the city attorney has given, and not utilizing that garage for any other living space, because one of my biggest concerns is people who are living there, parking on Cedar Street, and continually to use the brick road a lot, which you can, but there is a lot of traffic that goes in between all of the sponge docks that utilize that road. So I do think your design and being able to fit the cars as needed onto the property, that was a big issue for me, so thank you.
Okay. On that, what I'm going to do is, if you can just be patient a second, ask for a motion for, to approve Resolution 2023-27, an application for the conditional use of 122 West Cedar Street. I'm going to ask Ms. Kardashian, as you've invited me to do, for a suggested motion concerning, considering that you've helped with this.
Yes. If it's the desire of the commission to approve this, I would request that you approve it with the conditions that are up on the screen, so that the building permit is for the construction of the single-family dwelling within one year, that the dwelling shall function as a single-family unit with common utilities, and then the third condition being the execution and recording of a non-conversion agreement.
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no further comments, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes, thank you. Okay, move on to Item 14, Resolution 2023, applica, I'm sorry, -28, Application 22359, Kekilas Forest Site Plan. And this is also quasi-judicial, and Ms. Kardashian, could you read this by title, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 2023-28, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving Application Number 23-59, requesting site plan approval to construct a 1,737-square-foot second-story addition and a 410-square-foot first-floor entry and staircase addition on 0.11 acres, more or less, located at 417 South Pinellas Avenue in the T5A South Pinellas Avenue transect zone of the Sponge Docks and Community Redevelopment Area Special Area Plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. As this is a quasi-judicial matter, this matter before the City of Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners is quasi-judicial in nature. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission's function is to make findings a fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the commission. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues arising from the application in the applicable code sections. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate whether or not they have been sworn for the record prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the application based on the city's Code of Ordinances. At this time, any commissioners and the mayor who may have disclosures such as ex parte communications or conflicts of interest, please make those disclosures now.
Any from anyone?
All right, seem none. Anybody who is going to speak, please stand and receive the oath. Do you swear to tell the truth on this matter before the City of Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners this evening?
I do.
Right, please make sure you state your name, address, and indicate that you've been sworn when you come up to speak. Thank you.
Okay, see you, ma'am, for course.
Ms. Vincent again?
Thank you. This is Application 23-59. This is site plan approval for Kekilas Forest located at 1417 South Pinellas Avenue. And this is, this is the kind of project that we always envisioned when we put the smart code in place, so it kind of makes me happy to see this come forward, frankly. The existing florist building is proposed to be expanded primarily on the second floor with a small addition on the first floor to provide for stair access to the second story. The first floor will continue to function as the florist and workspace. The second floor will be a residential unit. So this is in, as I stated, this is in our smart code area. It's in the T5A, the South Pinellas District. You have alley access to the property. There's existing parking in the rear, so this is the first floor, the footprint, if you will, addition that will provide the stair access to the second story. This is the existing building footprint. And so there, landscape-wise, there will be a, they are going to put a little bit of retention back here, and then they have landscaping along the front of the property. It is compliant. There really weren't any specific requirements associated with this for landscaping, but they are improving the property. So this is, these are the elevations of what the proposed two-story will look like. So this, this is the addition area, the kind of the footprint addition for the two-story, for the entry and the stairs up to the second story. Oops, wrong way, sorry. And then just some more, a little more detailed building elevation. So this is the existing building as you see it today. These are what the proposed elevations will look like when it's said and done. And so the, these are the, this is the stairways going up and then onto the first floor. They are adding a small bathroom on the first floor, and then the, this is getting reworked into workroom and storage. This is a retail sales area. And then the second floor is essentially a living area, you know, full living unit with a home office. So there really are no issues with all of the site plan review criteria, compliance with the comprehensive plan, the land development and smart code. There are no issues with concurrency management or the city's building codes. So we do recommend approval of the site plan, subject to the following conditions: that site construction plan shall be consistent with the approved site plan, and all requisite fees are, will be paid, and that there's an expiration on the site plan of one year unless an application has been filed for building permit. So the Planning and Zoning Board did hear this on August 21st, and they did recommend approval by a vote of 5-0, and there was no one who spoke in, other than the applicant, there were no members of the public who spoke on the application. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any commission questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Actually, I'm looking at the condition as far as the site plan and expiration when the application has been filed. Looking at our current land development code changes, should we not maybe amend that to be obtained?
Right now, I mean, we have to work under the existing code language, and so I think we would be overstepping if we preemptively put in or changed the expiration to be something that's not been adopted yet. I'll defer to the attorney, however.
She is correct. You can only do what's currently in your code. Even if you were to change that ordinance tonight, you still would have a second reading, and then it would be 10 days after that that it took effect. So you can't essentially roll back somebody's property rights under your code.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, does the applicant have any questions from Ms. Vincent's presentation? Just for her presentation clarification, or you'll get, you'll be able to speak in a minute. Okay. No, Ms. Vincent, would you like your staff report entered into evidence?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The applicant, please.
My name's Andrew Pavlos, 417 South Pinellas Avenue, and I was sworn in. My wife and I are the owners, but I'm also the architect as well, so we're definitely looking forward to this. I'm going to start the drawings basically probably tomorrow on it, so I'm hoping I'll get a permit before the end of the year, and hopefully can start construction probably by maybe December if everything works out. But if you have any questions about the design or anything?
Okay, let me, any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Kulianis?
Good evening. The florist is going to stay there, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank God, because it gets me out of the doghouse when I forget holidays with my wife.
I have to build it in a way where she can't close down.
Yeah, okay, don't go anywhere. Okay, and, no, I just want to commend you on this, this is beautiful. I mean, this is exactly, like you said, this is the dream of the downtown area to have this kind of, you know, mixed-use.
Do you have a question for the applicant?
That was my question. Thank you.
Close it down.
Yeah, that was my question about, don't close the floor. So anyways, thanks.
Ms. Vincent, do you have any cross-examination for the applicant?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments, are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And I do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in.
Okay.
Good evening. Peter Delakis from afar. You have my address. I just would like to reiterate what Renee started with. This is what we envisioned the smart code to do. Too bad the people who bought the Manatee Village didn't raise it and put residential above that. Been over two years, we're still looking at that. But as far as this, this is the thing that we need to promote.
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting, but your remote access witnesses have not been sworn.
Okay, Mr. Delakis, how do we do this?
Mr. Delakis, do you?
Well, actually, when you did swear, I did raise my hand from afar, but I will say I swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to the best of my ability.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Delakis. Thank you, Ms. Kardashian. Mr. Delakis, please continue.
No, I just want to reiterate that we should maybe, you know, we do incentives for facades and other types of things, maybe. We need to look at incentives in the CRA for adding residential above buildings, so it's just another visionary thought to look at. As I spoke about earlier, we need to have vision on this board, and we set the vision originally when we put the smart code into effect, and now you have a chance to implement it. Thank you, Renee, for all your perseverance in bringing these types of things forward and pushing for what we really see as the vision of the area, what we call the CRA Downtown in the main part of Tarpon. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll speak more later.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. There's, Mr. Jump, are there any other public comments?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public.
Mayor, I think you have an additional member here that would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gettys, go ahead.
I have a quick question. David Ballard, Gettys Jr., Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor. What would be considered a requisite fee as it applies to redevelopment practices?
Okay, I'm not sure that that is applicable or relevant to this particular application. That's something that is determined through a different process. I also didn't see that you were sworn. If all you have is that question, then that's technically not really relevant here. That can be answered at a different forum. But if you did want to make comment, I do have to swear you in.
I think, Mr. Gettys, go ahead.
Do you swear to tell the truth on the matters here before the City of Tarpon Springs this evening?
I do.
All right, thank you.
As the presentation with Ms. Vincent was being delivered, there was reference to a, to pay all requisite fees, and such requisite fees as they apply to future formulations in regards to redevelopment was my question.
Okay, Ms. Vincent, go ahead.
Sure, that's simply referring to the, the basket of fees that come along with any, building permit fees, impact fees, water sewer impact fees, things of that nature. There are common fees that are in our building codes that we're required to collect when buildings are going through permitting processes.
As they relate to public charges or private charges?
That's all public, publicly required permit fees and impact fees in our codes of ordinances. Nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Gettys. Thank you, Ms. Vincent. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and are there any comments now from the commission? Any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm a huge fan of mixed use. I think we need to see more of it. It's the way we should do infill and development in this town, and I'm extremely pleased to see this. I really am. Thank you.
Anything?
I like the application that the owners are presented to us, and I mean, like Renee said, this, hopefully we start seeing some more buildings like this in the future that fits our downtown area, and hopefully more like this going on Safford Avenue to try to enhance the trail in the future. So that's why I just want to throw that out there, and as we start picking things up, this could be a domino for many good things to come in the future, so thank you.
Any, you, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just want to thank you. You should be an architect. Yeah, I know. That was a joke. No, it happens to really look beautiful, and I want to thank you because that particular area could use that little bit of an uplift, and there's been other locations that have been built and looking nice as well. And we just appreciate, you know, that you're willing to make that investment into Tarpon, so thank you.
For me, Commissioner Kulianis, did you have anything else? Yeah. It's welcomed, although, to be honest with you, I grew up with a green and white canopy in front of the store, so you don't have a canopy, and I'm going to miss that. But thank you very much for investing in Tarpon Springs and continuing to do that, so. And best of luck in the future. I see that this is the way the commission's going to go. If there's no further comments from the commission, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-28, Application 23-59, Kekilas Forest Site Plan.
So moved. Second.
If there's no comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes, thank you very much. You want a break? Point of privilege, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We're going to recess at 8:35 and reconvene at 8:45. Okay, we reconvene the meeting at 8:46. Item 15, Application 22-109, Amending Hurricane Shelter Impact Requirements and Establishing Coastal High Hazard Area Design Requirements. This is the first reading. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read the, we've got two. This is not quasi judicial, is it correct? Okay, so I guess what we'll do is the presentation for both at one time, and then key off ordinance 2022-24, Land Development Code Amendment. So if you could read that ordinance by title, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2022-24, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 8, Amending Section 122.12, Hurricane Shelter Impact Study, and Article 9, Adding Section 149, Coastal High Hazard Area Development Regulations, and Section 149.01, Coastal High Hazard Area Design Standards, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and Providing for the Effective Date of this ordinance. This is the first reading. Second reading will be held on September 19th, 2023, and was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on August 2nd, 2023, and September 6th, 2023.
Okay, thank you. Save management course. Ms. Vincent.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So there's two pieces of legislation here. One is an ordinance amending our current land development code regarding what are the requirements for hurricane shelter impact studies and mitigation efforts or requirements associated with that. And then the second was developing a new section of the code that established coastal high hazard area development standards. This is not the first time that the board has reviewed this. We had a first first reading back in December of last year. We had a lot of discussion. There was honestly not a lot of consensus, so we we kind of went back to the drawing board again, trying to address some of the concerns that we heard that night with the board. I don't know if I've been able to get us there frankly, but I do want to continue the discussion. If we don't get through the first reading, we don't, and we'll take another swing at a later date. So the ordinance 2022-24, as I said, it amends our current hurricane shelter impact study requirements. So basically, if a development's coming in that's in the that is in the coastal hazard area, and it is for more than, you know, a threshold, and as it's written today, it's 10 units under the revisions, then we require a mitigation study on shelter impacts if it's in an evacuation area. So the we tried to clean up that section of the land development code. We review, removed some references to how the studies can be conducted, what were acceptable sources of data. We have included a requirement that any mitigation study that would come before this board would have to also be reviewed by Pinellas County Emergency Management. And then we we've added to the acceptable mitigation acceptable mitigation, if it's required, we added the direct payment of a mitigation fee, or and we also added utilization of the coastal high hazard area design standards, and that's the next section. So we were trying to, one, so this reduces the requirements for when when or tightens up when a shelter impact study has to be done. It cleans up how those can be conducted in terms of the data sources that can be utilized, and it does pull Pinellas County in as a direct reviewer of any impact studies to see, to make sure that they concur with the outcomes. The second section of this ordinance is creating Section 149, which is Coastal High Hazard Area Development Regulations, and then Section 14901, which is the Coastal Hazard Area Design Standards. So again, what we're trying to do here is provide some, provide additional guidance that we don't have now, or additional regulations about how things can develop in the coastal hazard area. We have a lot of land that's, and specifically this is really referring more to residential design requirements than anything else. The design standards are meant to apply to multifamily and single-family attached, so multifamily apartments, if you will, and townhome developments that are in the coastal high hazard area. So that's an A evacuation zone. And so it's an added requirement and added layer of regulation to prevent flooding or mitigate for flooding and additional wind load requirements. So there's two things that would apply to those projects across the board. One would be requirement to build to base flood elevation plus three, and the second, higher wind load category. Then, as a project hits certain thresholds, and we lowered those thresholds from our first conversation with you, any project that has 50 units shall, minimum of 50 units, would have to provide for these additional mitigation measures. And then at 100 units, we lowered the threshold, so as the projects get larger, you have to provide for more of those mitigation measures. Originally, the mitigation measures were included in the ordinance, and there was some discussion previously about should those be in the ordinance? Should it be another, you know, like a reference document, something that's a little easier to amend? We went that route, and that's what the resolution attached with this is, is basically we pulled those mitigation measures that we were had were originally proposed to be included in the ordinance. We put them in a resolution, and then we put a reference into that you would have a reference to that resolution. I know what the Planning and Zoning Board, Ms. Kardashian, indicated that that may not be the best approach to this, because I guess I think it dilutes our ability to enforce those mitigation measures. I'll have to defer to her as to why. Having said all that, the Planning and Zoning Board felt very strongly that they wanted this ordinance, and they wanted those mitigation measures brought back into the ordinance, included in some way. So I'm gonna stop there. I know you've read, some of, four of you have seen this before. Obviously, Commissioner Kulianis is not. And see if we've, I don't know if we've addressed your previous concerns. Again, it didn't have a lot of consensus when we went through this before, but my, I think my strongest feeling about this is the Planning and Zoning Boards very adamant about this ordinance, and they want those mitigation measures included, and they want those design requirements included. So I'll stop there, and let's just have a discussion and see where this goes.
Ms. Kardashian, would you like to add to that?
Yes, I would. I do want to just take a minute to make sure that the commission understands why I am recommending that if you want these mitigation measures to be enforceable, that they're included in the ordinance and not the resolution. You know, your land development code and state requirements for adopting land development codes, and what you're going to require developers to do is stringent for a reason, because, you know, you want to have that extra level of notice. You want to make sure that when you're going to be enforcing things, they have the force of law that accompanies a ordinance. Resolutions are more temporary in nature, which is why they're easier to amend, and they should be more policy statements rather than actual building design requirements. they should be more policy statements rather than actual building design requirements. I don't think that a resolution for mitigation measures is gonna have the same efficacy that a ordinance is going to have if you want these to be enforceable, um, and you want to have these mitigation measures included. So that's why I told the Planning and Zoning Board that if you want developers to be held to these mitigation standards, and to be required to have these for buildings that are meeting those minimum thresholds, that you should really have it included in the ordinance versus the resolution. Now, I know that how it's been advertised, the mitigation measures are not currently in the ordinance, but at this point in time, you do have the option of amending that, so when it comes back for second reading, you can take those mitigation measures and have them as part of your ordinance for, uh, second reading, if that's what you want to do.
So when we, when we advertised, we did include, we still included the one-forty-nine and one-forty-nine oh one sections. So, um, we definitely advertised, the, the ordinance that we provided to them shows those, they're stricken through, and then we had a resolution. So I, I just wanted to confirm if, if we get through this tonight, and we can, want to pull those back in, we can go ahead and move to second reading at the next meeting the way it sits, or do you, what, would you want us to? We may not get there anyway, but I did want to kind of get clarification on process.
The question would be whether or not you needed to re-advertise the title. The title, as it currently reads, um, specifically says Hurricane Impact Shelter Study, adding sections one-forty-nine Coastal High Area Development Regulations, and section one-forty-nine point oh one Coastal High Hazard Area Design Standards. This would come under that section one-forty-nine oh one Coastal High Hazard Area Design Standards, so I don't think that you'd have to re-advertise the title, because that's sort of already included in there, and you already have that advertised on August second, and, and then tomorrow on, on September sixth. So it would be a matter of whether or not the Commission is passing the ordinance as is, or whether or not, um, you would be passing it as amended here tonight.
We don't, along the lines of what Ms., we've run into situations where an ordinance has had a substantial change from the first to the second, and, and we've had instances where we've done a new first, first reading. That would not be, would that be something that, in an abundance of caution, as you hear sometimes, to consider, or if we get to that point this evening?
I'm not sure. I think, wait and see if you're gonna get to that point this evening, because I know there's other questions, um, regarding the mitigation strategies and the resolution themselves.
Okay. If that's it from Ms. Vincent, Ms. Kardashian, I'm gonna go to the public, see if there's any public comments concerning this matter. Go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Trey Strube. I live at one-two-nine-two-four Buckhorn Drive in Hudson. Um, I am a student in the Public Policy and Administration Program at St. Petersburg College. I've spent a lot of time at the Tarpon Springs campus, and I'm here tonight to voice my support for ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-two-two dash twenty-four. Uh, this semester, I'm working on a case study project involving hurricane shelter mitigation in Tarpon Springs. Uh, the proposed changes to the land development code will provide the city with the best data sources to make emergency management decisions and increase its preparedness for coastal storms, as well as future environmental changes. Um, the lowered thresholds on hurricane shelter impact studies are an important change because of the vulnerability of the city being mostly located within the coastal high hazard area. Um, as coastal storms become more frequent, I think it's essential that we hold, uh, future developers to this higher standard regarding shelter mitigation. Um, I watched a prior Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, from back in December, uh, where the lack of a hurricane shelter in the city was being discussed, and how the solutions listed under section one-twenty-two-twelve C could be utilized. I think these provisions listed under numbers eight and nine would be beneficial in lieu of a shelter, as road elevation and improvements would benefit the community if evacuation were to become necessary. Uh, the changes to the base flood elevation and wind zone risk categories will lessen potential losses after a storm and help property owners with insurance costs. Uh, I had the opportunity to attend the last Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and there was concern expressed over those design options listed in the resolution. Ms. Kardashian said it much better than I could, uh, but I wanted to recommend that those measures are included in the ordinance or somewhere within the building code, as it would increase the resiliency of the city against coastal storms and projected sea level rises. The addition of the listed items would assist the community in recovering from coastal storms and ensure that infrastructure remains functional. According to the Pinellas County Local Mitigation Strategy, every dollar invested in mitigation saves a Pinellas County community an average of six dollars in recovery. Uh, the proposed changes to the land development code will benefit the community and may set an example for other coastal cities to adopt these similar design standards. Um, in closing, I hope that the board approves these proposed changes to the code, and that includes those mitigative measures, uh, as well. Um, and I wanted to thank Patricia McNeese and Irene Jacobs for helping with my project, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments concerning this ordinance?
Chris Roboski, one-six-zero-two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three-four-six-eight-nine. So this does not seem to increase safety of human lives. Nowhere in here does it say that you're gonna limit development for human beings to reside, and, oh, they can just have one entrance and one exit for hundreds, maybe thousands of people in that development? Why would you allow that? Why would you allow any development for residents in the coastal high hazard area? It doesn't have to be that way. You don't have to allow that. I mean, and hopefully, you will rewrite this and put some real teeth in it. You know, if they want to build a warehouse on there and knock themselves out, put a warehouse on the river. But you're gonna put people's lives at risk? And you know, you might say, what a lot of people say, oh, you know, that those people know what they're buying into. No, they don't. They don't realize, they thought the government and all the agencies did their due diligence so that they feel safe buying on the river. But that's not the case. And it's not just their lives, it's our two chiefs, young. Both of them are put at risk if you allow people to build in the coastal high hazard area, and all the people that work for them are put at risk. So if you don't give a darn about those people that buy those places, you gotta at least think about the people that have to go in and rescue them. Put some real teeth in this thing. There's no need for any more development in a place you know is going to flood, certainly not putting people's lives at risk. It's unbelievable to me. And I hope that this, you will put some mechanism, uh, mechanism in there, that concurrency, when a concurrency review happens, specifically for the seventy-four acres on the Anclot River, that they have to abide by whatever you come up with. Just because they couldn't get their thing done in a timely manner? Too bad. Things change. Now you have to follow the new set of rules that actually will save lives. I, I just can't imagine. We just went through this. I mean, this, and this was an easy storm to get through. It's gonna get worse, maybe even this year. If you guys have the power to change that, you can save lives here tonight and forever more. Just start thinking about that. Why would you put anybody else at risk? I mean, one way in and out for thousands, I mean, it doesn't make sense. How are you gonna evacuate all those people? Why wouldn't that be a requirement? No, you can't do it that way. And so on, you know, elevation and stuff, that's nice, but why put people in a flood zone anymore? It doesn't have to happen. We could put a stop to it tonight. I mean, just redraft this thing and, and kick the can down the road and fix it when you've had more time to think about it. But this does not seem to me like something that's gonna save lives. And to, to be able to buy into a program? What? The developer who pays the money to build his project doesn't give a damn about those people that are gonna die in there. So you know how you don't need those, uh, those shelters? You don't allow people to build in a flood zone? Then you don't need the shelter. That's how you fix that problem. The fewer places you put at risk, the fewer shelters you will need. That costs the city zero. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in.
Good evening. Peter Delakis, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. Let's get to the root of all this. Page eight and nine, under the one-forty-nine and one-forty-nine oh one. I don't have any problems with one-forty-nine, but I do have issues with the one-forty-nine oh one. If you look on page nine, you'll see all the things that are in the resolution was struck out in red, they were added, and then struck out. So as Ms. Kardashian mentioned, all you have to do is unline the, what was lined out, and you put it back into the ordinance. This does give you the teeth to enforce these things. Now, the point I would like to say, all of these are nice measures to help improve the potential situation, but again, it does not stop development in the coastal high hazard area, and these are predominantly for multifamily. Now, I'd like to bring back to everybody's attention, a while back during our hearings, it was brought up that we have somewhere in our ordinances, and Ms. Vincent can maybe relay this, that you have to have a balance within the coastal high hazard area. You cannot develop more than a certain level, and even Ms. Tara Paney at the time during the hearings had mentioned there was no mechanism to measure that as to how to keep that balance. So if anything, to start putting some teeth into this, you need to have some mechanism to determine what, how many areas in the city are in the coastal high hazard area, what's the residential development, and then you have to balance out what's the amount of residential development you're going to allow going further into those areas. So unless you have the mechanism to measure what your coastal high hazard residency rate is at, and not to increase it, from what I remember that ordinance says, you not to increase residential development in there, then you need to do that. Uh, also, the fact that you're, uh, separating the section, uh, as a resolution, I would again agree with Ms. Kardashian, take your attorney's, uh, recommendation, that this does need to be in the ordinance, but in the meantime, you do need to find some other ways to measure and limit, measure and limit the development of residential and coastal high hazard areas. Thank you for your time. I hope you have wise judgment in deciding these issues. God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, is there anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. I'm gonna go to, um, uh, the Commission for, before we do a motion and a, um, a second, just to see, get a sense of where the discussion's gonna take us, if I can go to the Commission for any comments or questions that you might have of Ms. Vincent, uh, anyone. Do you have any questions or comments concerning this ordinance?
Um, yeah. I have a lot of comments, actually. I'm not quite sure whether this should be made after the motion before, but I'm willing to go now. So, removing the, the list of available mitigation methods, I'm putting them into a resolution, I tend to concur with our legal people that that doesn't have the effect of law, so it's, it's not gonna, I understand the flexibility there, um, but, I mean, ordinance can be changed in attitude, too. We just have to, we just have to advertise them and read them, so. And the original list was expanded to allow, to allow any similar resiliency measures may be reviewed and approved by the city's technical review committee. I guess this is intended to provide more flexibility, um, but again, I'm not quite sure if it's enforceable, that the technical review committee starts adding things and subtracting things from, from what is an ordinance, it's what should be an ordinance. So I think that, that's enough about this. I, I don't think it's ready to move forward as it's written with the, you know, exculpation of, of, uh, the conditions of mitigation, et cetera. As far as the one-twenty-two dot twelve, the hurricane impact study, um, there's a section in there, in, that's in section A, that says that, uh, they should submit an analysis which indicates that available shelter space will not be exceeded. Uh, wording needs to be changed on this, and revised to indicate will or will not be exceeded, so that we get both stories rather than just one.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Can you say that again? I, I didn't understand. You, you wanted to reword it to?
I'm sorry. The actual, the actual text reads, "All requests for site plan subdivision, zoning, land use, or conditional use approval, which entails residential development of ten or more units, which involves a site which is wholly or partially located with Pinellas County evacuation zones A, B, or C, shall appear and submit an analysis which indicates that available shelter space will not be exceeded." Well, that's really good, but if it is exceeded, we need to know that as well within that report, and I don't think it's worded correctly. Um, small point for me. In section C of that one-twenty-two dot twelve impact study, says, "The study shall provide solutions for mitigation where a shelter deficit is projected. The solutions must provide for mitigation equivalent to the proposed developments anticipated hurricane preparedness impacts, and may utilize any single or combination of the following mitigative techniques, subject to review, by, and concurrence of the Pinellas County Emergency Management Department as applicable." I don't think we want to really get the Pinellas County Emergency Management Department involved in this whole process. If we do, it needs to be codified somehow, or there needs to be a process, and I'm not sure if we've reached out to them, if they're even willing to do this sort of thing. I think it needs to be as determined by, and I would like Mr. LaCurus to tell us who should make those determinations within the city government, whether it's Mr. LaCurus himself, whether it's the, uh, the building manager, um, whatever. It should, I don't believe it should go to the, to the, the PCM. I just do not. I think it places, uh, the PCM in a, in a position that they probably do not want to be in. It also puts another step in our, in our plan, which made the layout. I mean, is the PCM gonna get back to us in thirty days, sixty days, ninety days? Are they gonna want to do it at all? That's one of the concerns I have. Regarding may utilize, uh, I think this is actually getting into the actual mitigation part, but it says, "May utilize any single or combination of all the following mitigation techniques," which refers to the, uh, the actual following resolution. I'm not a particular fan of methodology which allows developers to buy their way out of anything, which is what I think a lot of those mitigation strategies enable. I think there's a couple that seem to be exceptions to this. One of them seems to be the donation or use of private structures as hurricane shelter spaces, should they meet the requirements thereof, and the provision of on-site shelter space when the project includes a community center or other suitable facility. So those are the only two that I see as, as actually helping mitigate the fact that there might be impact on shelters.
So these are, these are all in the, in our ordinance today?
I understand.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, so.
And some of the mitigation techniques, um, I don't believe should be optional for new developments. Um, number six, the provision for a limitation on density or project phasing. I think that needs to be included, should they be inclined. Number seven, the provision and maintenance of public information program and hurricane evacuation fund within a homeowners' association. I think that needs to be mandatory. I think if they don't discuss that when they're within their homeowners' association, that's a big, uh, you know, it's not doing justice to the, to the homeowners. Uh, number eight, uh, the provision for the elevation of all roads within the proposed development above the flood level of a category-three hurricane event, uh, making evacuation more feasible. I think that should be strongly considered. I think that should be strongly considered as a hard, hard thing to get by. Otherwise than that, we're gonna see more flooding, more people not being able to get out of their neighborhoods, and it's, this is not a good thing. We don't have any shelters currently in Tarpon Springs, I'm, I'm sure you know that. I'm not aware that there's any in consideration right now. Direct payment of a shelter mitigation fee, to what end?
So that we can coordinate with Pinellas?
Where does it go?
That money would be coordinated with Pinellas County toward a, a, a future shelter.
It's just, I don't know, it does, it doesn't make any sense to me to allow a developer to buy his way out of anything, especially when it concerns the safety of our citizens, because that's exactly what they will do. They will do the minimum possible and pay whatever they have not to do it. So, as far as section 149, the coastal high hazard area development regulations, it mentions that the area below the elevation of the cat one storm surge line as enabled by the SLASH computerized storm surge model. I thought we had this discussion in December? I'm not sure the SLASH model is even being used effectively these days, I had to dig for it to find a current one. Excuse me, and the most detail I could get was from a 5,000-foot view. That doesn't allow us to really take a look at anything.
No, the, the coastal high hazard area is updated through the regional planning agencies down through Pinellas County and to us every two or three years. It's a, they're, you still use the term the SLASH model, it is a computerized elevation model. Um, it does get updated every two or three years.
I know it got updated, it just didn't seem to be updated to a point less than 5,000-foot view, which makes it very hard to see what's in or what's out of category one, category of evacuation.
It's a, it's, it's every, if you look at our evacuation map, everything that is in an A evacuation zone, that is the coastal high hazard area by definition.
Yeah, it's just hard for me to find, anyway, just a comment. There was another concern of mine where it said that solid waste and commercial hazardous waste management facilities, including regional storage treatment or transfer sites, are prohibited in the CSHA, or coastal high hazard area, sorry, I'm stumbling here. I think that's a good thing. I'm not quite sure if it affects our current or future plans for the transfer site we have for yard waste or expansion of anything that we have to do for solid waste within our town. I think we need to take that into consideration. Um, I know we're probably grandfathered in with our current facility, but should we decide to move that facility for any reason? Or expand on that facility, that might have an impact that we, we need to take into consideration. I'm sorry, I, I tend to be anal, that's, that's actually the last comment I, I, I have on this particular subject, thanks, sorry. Commissioner Kulianis, you have your light on.
Yeah, I definitely don't think we're ready to move forward on this. I mean, I think it's a great start at a, at the project. You know what, our, our two residents that got up and spoke, or one that spoke from the sky. This, I mean, we got a taste, a small taste of what can happen. That hurricane was 125 miles offshore, and we were flooded terribly. Most water I've seen in Tarpon in a long time. We gotta have some teeth in, you know, what gets built in these hazard areas. So, a, and I think all the, the items that the vice mayor pointed out, that, you know, this, this needs some, some more work. I think it's a great start, but I, I would recommend we defer and, and work on this further, but we definitely have, uh, we have to be really concerned about what we build on, in, uh, in flood zones.
Can I, can I just interject a little bit, I'm sorry?
Please.
Right now, we have no additional requirements for construction in the coastal high hazard area.
Right.
None. This is a first step toward strengthening our code to require all multifamily and, and townhomes, which, those are higher concentrations of, so we have land that is zoned for development in the coastal high hazard area that has residential density. This is an additional requirement that we do not have today, that at a minimum says that any, i- if you meet these thresholds, that you have to build to a minimum base flood elevation of plus three and the next higher wind load category. Okay, so, we can't, you know, the idea that we can just say we're not gonna have any development in the coastal high hazard area when probably half of the city is in the coastal high hazard area already and has development rights?
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that.
I guess I'm saying, if y'all, I have no, if y'all want to table this, great, but I, this is an interim step toward looking at a much broader picture, is, I guess is my only, but city manager's waving me down, so.
I, I, I commend you. I got big skins, so you, you can, you can get as tough as you want.
Commissioner Kulianis, continue.
Yeah, still have the floor. So, uh, no, I, I, I'm happy that you feel comfortable enough to talk to me like that, so I, I, I commend you for that, I, I, I encourage it. Okay, so, um, no, I think this is a great start, and if, if we are, I, this is a first reading, if we're gonna be bringing it back and it's gonna get worked on, and then, you know, we can have a second, I'm fine with that as well. But, again, I just, I haven't had enough time to really underst, to grasp everything here. Again, the vice mayor pointed out a bunch of things that, 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 um, that, that got me thinking and got me concerned. Again, what this, this couple citizens that spoke, again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we should never build, what I'm saying is, if we do, the scrutiny needs to be extensive, because there are people at risk, and we don't want to have, encourage, we, we want to save up, uh, of building as we can, and safe as we can for all the, the residents to, to get out of places, if there's only one exit out of something and it's, and it's a dangerous spot, then, you know, those are things that we should address. And, again, this is a great start, I, I commend you, but, um, I, I haven't gotten my hands around it enough to.
Fair enough.
But, again, if, if, if the consensus of the board is, is, you know, to move it forward, then we can always get into more details, uh, later down the road. Thank you.
Let me get, Commissioner Kulianis had his light on.
No worries.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kulianis.
Renee, to, as you know, the, the involvement with the planning and zoning board on, on this item, and with the city attorney's advice about possibly adopting these as ordinances, do you think that the planning zoning board would like to have it come back in front of them to discuss about being changed into ordinances?
I mean, they were, they pretty much directed that they wanted this adopted and they wanted those, those me, measures brought back into the ordinance, I, is that a fair statement?
That, that's a fair statement, that they did want to see the mitigation measures, um, included in the ordinance. What they did not discuss was, um, the actual mitigation measures themselves. Um, that's something that, that they just didn't really touch on during the discussion, but they did see the need for having mitigation measures in place. And I think part of the reason that they saw that as important and wanting to move this forward is also because of the Live Local Act, which is currently in effect, um, and the fact that you could have developments in your coastal high hazard areas that as a gift from our legislature are not going to be subject to much and the highest density available in your city, essentially.
Thank you for mentioning that, that's a very salient point.
Okay, now, uh, I, I want to go back to a second, we talked about multi-dwellings and, you know, so mu, some, so much amount of units and above. A single, you know, individual property owner has a house in the coastal high hazard older house, you know, either they remodel, what are they subject to? A, any of these rules that apply that we're looking at right now?
No, existing, I mean, existing platted, single-family lots, infill lots, if you will, throughout the city, if they're in the coastal hazard area, they simply have to comply with, um, the FEMA base flood elevations, plus we have an additional requirement for one additional foot of freeboard, so it's base flood elevation plus one. Their, the wind loading standards were, are whatever's in our Florida building code today, uh, for, you know, for our area, for Pinellas County. So there, none of this would apply to single-family detached homes or duplexes.
Yes, ma'am, okay, so, um, so I would just recommend when this, that, you know, this board wants to adopt this resolution or adopt this ordinance and see where we go from there. But, you know, but to think that there's gonna be no building whatsoever in the coastal high hazard area is just, it's a farfetched. I mean, we live in Tarpon Springs, uh, we could definitely be tougher on, you know, our ordinances and our building code, but to say no building in the coastal high hazard is, it's just not gonna happen. It's the city that we are, that we live in, that you choose to live into as well, and, um, you, you must understand the property that you buy and, and what you plan to do with it within the code, so, uh, I'm not even gonna think about supporting no building in the coastal high hazard. Thank you.
Commissioner Kulianis? Thank you, Mayor. I, I see there is a lot of questions still needing to be answered, and I understand that, and I'm in agreement with that as well. My big question is, in your opinion, are you more leaning for us to, um, possibly go ahead with this at this point, or with the two readings, and then alter it again? Or is it better to leave it the way a, and not move it forward, alter it one shot, and, and just do it that way?
My preference would be to get this adopted, and then revisit the bigger picture of some of the things that I'm hearing about the, you know, how we do the impact studies, what qualifies as mitigation. It sounds like there's a broader interest to, to look at a lot more, and I think if we're gonna do that, we probably need some, some outside assistance, maybe. With regard to, but I am concerned, and I'm glad that Attorney Kardashian brought up the Live Local Act. You know, we are going to have a, we're going to have some multifamily developments, affordable housing, that are going to come to this city under Live Local, we know it, and if, if this is in place, then it applies to them, and that's probably our most vulnerable populations. So, at least you're going to have buildings that are safer, they're more, higher elevated. If people can't evacuate, they're gonna be safer where they're at in place. So, I realize, obviously, we want people to evacuate if they can evacuate, but there's always people that aren't going to, and so, this only strengthens those multifamily developments to flood and windborne debris, it, it, it makes them less vulnerable to it. So, I don't know how that's frankly a bad thing at this point. If we want to look bigger, um, and, and it also requires those resiliency measures, so if the power is out, there are things like, you know, that, if those resiliency measures are put in place, it might make things a little more comfortable while we're in a recovery, and so that's, that's the, the, that's the intent. Did that help you?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to get your take on it, so, um, so you're saying something is better than nothing? But, I, I'm hearing just so much that I'm trying to think whether we should possibly do this, um, in, in a workshop, where, um, everybody gets to put their input in, and we can get to where we could fine tune this. Otherwise, this type of, of item could just continue to be kicked down the road for, I don't know how long, so. I, I mean, I, I'd be in favor of moving it ahead tonight, but not with, you know, but knowing that I want to change certain things, and I know that other commissioners want to change other things, so. That's where.
Sure.
That's where I'm at.
Ms. Vincent, let me, let me try and, um, kind of whittle away at this a little bit. I, I know what you're saying. I, I had a letter today, um, and I looked and you were copied on it, but it wasn't an email, it was from the county concerning some new countywide land use changes, or, I'm sorry, countywide, comprehensive plan changes concerning the coastal high hazard?
I haven't seen, I didn't see that.
Okay, all right. Um, I know they're proposing those, it didn't have the language, it had the ordinance and was asking us to take a look at it.
Okay.
And, um, so, but let me get back to that point. How does this ordinance mesh with our current coastal high hazard area or comprehensive plan that addresses that? Does this fit with that, or are we gonna have to change some of the, the? It fits with that, then?
It, it does. In fact, um, one of the, if you recall, the amendments that we, that the board adopted, um, several months ago, we amended the future land use and the coastal elements of the, of the comprehensive plan to, um, addressing some of the coastal high hazard area concerns and strengthening it, and one of the things that we did reference in there was the need for coastal hazard area design requirements. So it's really already kind of, comp plan, we got it a little bit of a head, and, which is ideal. Uh, so no, there's no conflict with our comp plan, definitely.
Okay. So basically, I agree with you completely that what we have in front of us is better than what we have on the books right now. And, um, I also appreciate, because there's been some brief soundbites between us and the city manager and myself concerning the state law, the new state law that's gonna make it a lot easier for, uh, some of these developments to move in with, out of a whole lot of say of what this commissioner, what this commission has, uh, as far as comments. So, I, I really think that, um, uh, we've got two choices. Given where we are right now with our current ordinance, what we have is better than our coordinates, at least moves it in the right direction. And the, the only other choice is to, uh, moratorium on the, uh, for construction in coastal high hazard area until we get this thing complete. That's, those are the choices I see. My preference would be, um, to go ahead and move forward with this thing, given that it's better than what we've got. I agree also with Vice Mayor Lunt's comment that I don't think developers should be able to buy their way out of things when it comes to public safety, so whatever we decide to do, if we go forward with this version of it, in addition to what your recommendations are, Ms. Kardashian's, I would like to make those provisions taken out that they can buy in, buy them, buy their way out of not being able to satisfy some safety requirement, at least in, in the near term. Now, you know, that's given that this is the first step in what we're doing. I agree with you that we should revisit this again, maybe in a little more, less, what would you call it, um, stressful or compressed approach of having to either approve this tonight or not approve it tonight, sort of thing. I, I'm not sure, I'd like to do a workshop, but we've got so many things right now lined up, and, and, um, that in the next three or four months, that I don't know that we would be able to get to it, but I'd like to actually, uh, once we get, if we get this thing forward, actually, you know, continue to take a look at it, have conversations with the planning department, see where we would need to go to make it even better than what we would have tonight. So that's my recommendation, um, is, is to, um, to adopt, um, what we have tonight as a first reading, Ms. Kardashian can look at it from a, whether we need to do another first first with pulling those, that resolution into the, uh, um, those requirements into the ordinance. Also eliminate any ability for a developer to buy out of the, um, and any requirements that he has to do with regard to public safety. Ms. Kardashian, your light is on.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, there was one additional item that, um, Vice Mayor Lunt had spoken about, which was the review by Pinellas County Emergency Management Department. Um, and Ms. Vincent, my understanding is that really what you're trying to achieve there is to make sure that there's, um, a concurrence between the countywide emergency management plan, um, and the, the facilities essentially as, as they're designed, is that correct?
Correct, I mean, whether, whether we like it or not, Pinellas County has the umbrella for shelter management for the entire county, including all the municipalities. So, I fully understand that, you know, we want a shelter here. Finding a place for a shelter here that works for Pinellas County is really challenging. But they also, you know, they also are the arbiter of, of, of the methodology but they also, you know, they also are the arbiter of, of, of the methodology, and making sure that when someone gives us a mitigation study, that it comports with how they, how they conduct their shelter needs analysis. So, you know, I, I would like, and frankly, they are more than a, they, they want to be involved in these, they, they really do. It could slow, so slow a project down, but that's, you know, to get the, you know, the right mitigation effort is, that's okay, so, yes.
So, my, my question then is, what is in place, then, that gives them the authority to review or weigh in on the city's development plans? Or development permits, or development regulations? I just, I don't see that they have that, number one, I don't see that they have that legal authority. Number two, if we were going to do something like that, and include them in this, then I would want some sort of interlocal that would provide for that review, what the terms of that review is, how soon they have, like you said, you know, when they're gonna turn that around to us, because then you're talking about developers' rights in terms of the time that they have for the processing of their applications with the city. So that's a concern for me, with having another agency that doesn't have another legal right or authority to do that, reviewing our development plans.
We have, we have language policies in our comp plan that require us to allow Pinellas County as an affected jurisdiction to review things that are, so if it's their road, if they're, and because inherently, they are the ones that have to provide shelter for the entire county, I think we have that ability under our comp plan to say, yes, please review this. I understand tightening that up.
Okay. Then, my other question, though, is whether or not there is the ability for staff to actually review and provide the opinion regarding concurrence with the Pinellas County plan.
I mean, I, I think that's why we would, we would prefer to defer that, that review to Pinellas County. I mean, we don't really, I, you know, I guess we would, could use an outside consultant for that, and charge for it.
So, actually, what I am looking for is somebody on Tarpon staff that would review this and provide an opinion.
I mean, I guess it would be the technical review committee as a whole.
You could, you could do the technical review committee, I know currently, Mark is your emergency manager, so you could have your emergency manager sign off on that opinion, or you can have staff in the form of the TRC, so you have multiple staff members that are having eyes on it, and providing that opinion through your technical review committee, or somebody like yourself, or, you know, your building official, or your floodplain manager, that's credentialed in this area.
We do have our certified flood, floodplain managers as well.
Yes.
Could we, if, if we move ahead with this, could this be something that could be ironed out between readings?
It could be, you know, it would just be whether or not you're going to request that amendment in the form of your motion.
Okay. Okay, so, are there any other comments? Because I'd like to move the meeting forward. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance with some conditions, or at least some, some additions to just the approval process? And is there anybody that would like to make a motion?
I would make the motion, but I want Ms. Kardashian to be the...
That's what I was...
Yes.
Would there be a second to that motion?
Second, yes.
Okay, Ms. Kardashian.
Okay, so, just to be clear, the motion is to approve ordinance 2022-24, subject to the amendment to include the mitigation measures from the ordinance back into the, or from the resolution back into the ordinance, and to revise the review by the Pinellas County Emergency Management Department, to have it in-house by staff.
And also, I would like to have any ability for a developer to buy out of the...
Ah, okay, so three amendments, the third one being removal of, the, the removal of payment into the fund, the mitigation fund.
So moved.
And Vice Mayor Lunt, you made the, or Commissioner, who?
I seconded it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Uh, wait a minute, Commissioner Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yeah, you know, I, I think we need to realize here, though, that although, as time constrained, we, as we are, this workshop that was mentioned once or twice, needs to be done. This is one of the most important impactful decisions that we're going to make as a, as a commission, so that, it needs to be scheduled. Having said that, I'm all for, you know, moving this forward today, amending it further as we go along, but that workshop needs to happen.
It, and, and you know, and you're right, and that's a matter of priorities. In other words, if this workshop's more important than something else that has been discussed, then this would take priority over that.
I agree.
And that would some, be something that we could, city manager could come back to you with, asking some guidance on, this is what I've got, A, B, C, and D, which one do you want done first, and we'll go from there, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Okay, that was item, oh, that was, we don't need to do the resolution, Ms. Kardashian?
What I would like for you is actually to do the resolution and vote it down.
Okay. Do we need to accept the staff report as part of the, the resolution, as we did for the quasi judicial?
This, you don't need to do that for this.
All right, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 2023?
No, 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 well, first I have to read it by title, and the, the motion would be to deny.
Okay.
Okay, Resolution 2023-26, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to adopt the Tarpon Springs Coastal High Hazard Area mitigative measures for new construction, providing for the pre-approved options for mitigation of new construction in the coastal high hazard area, CHHA pursuant to Article 9 Development Standards, Section 149.01, Coastal High Hazard Area Design Standards, providing for severability, providing for reference in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this resolution. And you can either do it in the positive, as a motion to include that into the ordinance, 2022-24.
Let me, let me go to public comments on this.
Yes.
Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, allow the first person in.
Here to Act 514, Ashland Avenue, I would like to commend the board for the amendments that they made to the previous ordinance that does satisfy this. As it was pointed out, this is a first step, so it gives you a chance to at least strengthen the rules for these areas, and then at the next point, you can at some point revise these things, and appreciate the fact that you listened to the attorney and staff in the best way to handle this. And again, it's your buddies up in Tallahassee that keep passing these laws that restrict our home rule, and force things down our throats, and unfunded mandate, wake up! Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jumper, are there any other comments?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 2023-26?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was a motion to approve, is the motion to add the resolution to the ordinance?
Yes.
Second?
Clarification?
Adding that resolution to the ordinance. The first, the maker of the motion said that's what he intended, is that what the second? Okay, thank you.
So, read very clearly, restate clearly what the motion is.
So, the motion is to include the terms of the resolution into the ordinance, 2022-, what, 24?
Right, but not to deny it.
I think this board is used to being in the positive, then you vote, and you vote no. That's what they're used to, I don't...
Ah, okay.
It's always to be in the affirmative, but they could all intend to vote no, but you do the, that, that's how this board is, is operated.
Okay, so, you're requesting that the motion be made to approve, and then everybody vote to deny? That's fine, absolutely fine. Thank you, sorry.
Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Would I ask for clarification?
This is Jacob's, the most important person at this meeting is to understand what we just said, is you.
Got it.
All right.
So, the motion is that you're...
And Vice Mayor Lunt, you seconded it?
I seconded it.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve Resolution 2023-26. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
No.
Commissioner Kuliass?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Definitely no.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
No.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
No. Okay, okay, thank you, city manager, of course.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, item 16, Ordinance 2023-08, application 22-115, Land Development Code Fees and Charges. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read that by ordinance, um, by title, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2023-08, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 15, Fees and Charges, Section 246, Fees and 247 Charges, to update existing fees and establish new fees for professional review services, drainage and stormwater review, utility service review, and temporary use fees for mobile food vendors, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent?
Ms. Vincent.
City manager, of course, yeah.
Thank you. This is Land Development Code Amendment number 22-115, Ordinance 2023-08. Previously, we discussed with the board during budget cycle, the board, that basically the city has been absorbing the cost for stormwater and utility reviews for years, up to and including paying our private stormwater consultants when we're reviewing site plans and developer projects, and, so you did provide a direction that we wanted to shore that up, and at least recoup some of those costs, that have been, by, by way of creating a stormwater review fee, utility review fees, and then any other fees, associated fees that are kind of out of the ordinary. So that's what's being proposed with this ordinance, so this would update Sections 246 and 247, and it establishes new, new fees in addition to what we already have for, so when a site plan comes in for review, in addition to our normal site plan review fee, there will also be, you know, a requisite stormwater review fee. And then it also provides for when things, we get resubmittals, so it really kind of incentivizes the developer to get it right the first time, you're not gonna get multiple reviews on, on the city dime, where we have to pay our stormwater engineers of record. So, that's the basis for this. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it, I'm not gonna go line by line through all the proposed changes. We do have a kind of a catch-all for all other city engineer and engineer of record review services, so if we're in a major case, and we've gotta hire an outside transportation consultant to review something, to get a peer review, we would, we have, we have built, we've tried to accommodate everything. I do know that the mayor did bring up a question regarding, since we don't have the ability, we as staff cannot meet, like, with, with our technical review committee, if the developer's attorney is present, we need to have an attorney present representing us. So I think your question, Mayor, was, is there a way to incorporate the, the cost of that, to having our attorney at a technical review committee? I think we can work that in between first and second readings as, as another, just another line item on the, on the first table, and to cover that cost, so. But with that, I'll stop and answer any questions. We did get input from our engineers of record on developing the fees, a lot of it's largely modeled after Hillsborough County, but, and again, this is a first, this is a first go round for us, so this may be something that, as we start evaluating, and how we're recouping, you know, those costs, is it, are those, are those charges right? We also, you know, our engineers in house reviewed it as well for, you know, what's a reasonable fee on a, you know, to review a sheet on a, on a plan set, so our engineers really know, they know what that cost is as well in the private sector, so we think we're in, in a good spot with it, but, again, we'll hopefully get this adopted, and, sorry.
Okay. Let me go to public comments, are there any public comments on this item?
Alard Gettis, Junior, Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor, I just received my trim notice from the county regarding my property taxes, and in there was a, a non-ad valorem assessment regarding stormwater potential upcoming development practices. In with that, trim notice was a little flyer that suggested that my title to my property may be subjective to such development practices, to include stormwater vaults that possibly may be placed underneath our driveways, that'll be a privatized stormwater contrivance to pump excess rainwater and so forth, and water coffins, if you will, underneath our, our driveways, water vaults. Now, should this development practice be privatized, will these charges be levied against the equity of my home? And when I go to sell my home, would I realize that my title was subjected to such development practices, and that would be called carpetbagging in my mind? I don't believe we're being fully disclosed as to what's going on with this development in regards to stormwater, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gettis. I honestly don't know how to respond to you this evening concerning that, Ms. Kardashian.
The city cannot provide you legal advice with respect to your tax notice, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands this time.
Okay, let's go to commission comments, any commission comments on, questions on this item from Ms. Vincent, Vice Mayor Lunt?
Just a, a small little question, Renee, if like always. I'm totally fine with the charges, et cetera, and I'm sure staff has, has gone over them, and I'm in no position to, to question any of them. However, the fourth whereas in this ordinance says the city previously established a new review fee for temporary mobile food vendors. Was that to provide precedence? Do we need to fit a number of whereas's on the ordinance, or?
No, it, it's just, it's, because it, it's, it's, it doesn't need to be there, but again, when I do whereas clauses, I like to provide the rationale behind why some things are included in this particular set of ordinances. When we updated the mobile food truck ordinance several months ago, we specifically required a permit fee to be 25% of the...
I understand, I was here.
Yeah, so I'm, just took an opportunity to include it in here, it doesn't need to be in the whereas clause, but I always like to prove, 20 years from now, I, I like for somebody to be able to read that, that ordinance, and say, oh, that's why they did that, so that's the only reason.
My personal viewpoint is, it's not needed, but...
I have no issues with taking it out.
All right, with that. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we put in a, another line that says for 100% of the cost for any legal incurring that we have? Beside the fact, we could put something in here that just has anything unbeknownst to us, any outside, because things do come up, and, you know, we shouldn't be responsible for those.
I think we can put a catch-all of, like, other professional services, something, I'll work with the attorney on that.
Right, you have it specific for engineer and engineer of record review services. It could just cover anything that is outside this purview, that's, that's what I would like to see.
And I think we can actually probably add that to the first table, the 241, 24601, which is less, it's, it's for fees and services, it's not specific to the drainage, you know, to the engineer of record stuff, so I think we can add it to the end of, end of table, that first table in the ordinance.
Especially if you don't know whether there's gonna be legal representation or not, or whether there's gonna be any other outside consultants or not.
Right.
So, I ju, I just wanna make sure that we're covered. If we're gonna do this, make sure we have the umbrella.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Kuliass, Commissioner Kuliannis, okay. If not, may I have... If not, I have a motion to approve ordinance two zero two three dash zero eight, application two two dash one one five, land development code fees, charges.
So moved with my additions.
That'd be fine, yeah.
Second.
Second.
Second, okay. If there's no further commission comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes.
And just for the record, the, this was first reading. The second reading will be held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on August second, twenty twenty-three, and then tomorrow, September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, the next one is ordinance two zero two three dash zero nine. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read that by title, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the city of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Sections eighty-two, Final Development Plan Review, two ten point oh five, Site Plans, Expirations and Extensions, and Section two forty-one definitions, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. This is first reading. The second reading will be held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on August second, twenty twenty-three, and also tomorrow, September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. This ordinance addresses some very old and problematic regulations regarding how things, certain development orders expire in our land development code. So in the past, final plan developments, site plans for, you know, any development, the, the expirations were tied to applying for a building permit, not obtaining a building permit, applying for a building permit. And then it's very silent after that as to what happens. So does that mean once I apply, it goes into suspense forever? That's the current interpretation. So this ordinance updates the land development code for final plan developments, that they must approve, BOC approval within one year of preliminary plan development approval. So that's another place where we have, you get preliminary plan, and then it can be two, three years and constant, you know, review and not actually getting that final plan development approved. So that was a change. Once the final plan development is approved, that the building permit for construction has to be obtained within two years of final plan development approval, and that's obtaining the bill, the actual site construction or building permits. And then site plan construction must be obtained within one year. And we do provide for an extension period if they've applied for the building permit and they've kept it active and they're reviewing it, you can request an extension of an additional year. And we also updated some definitions. So with that, I'll stop, and hopefully you've had a chance to read through this one, and I know it's getting late already, so.
Thank you. Are there public comments on this item?
Christopher Boski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. So there were a lot of issues around this during the Walmart development days. And as I mentioned to you earlier about concurrency in those days, even though the law states that it was three years, you know, you have to have a concurrency review, and that's for things like traffic, right? Their attorney argued that they had ten years, as if traffic doesn't increase per day, right? So they were saying, and even our city attorney, Yakavon, at the time, was trying to pretend that they should have ten years before that. They need to meet the new requirements, and that's what I'm talking about with the coastal high hazard area. You know, you want to make sure that whoever already has some sort of a development agreement is going to be current with what you guys agreed to for that. It's not going to do the human beings any good that live in those dwellings that were approved if, you know, and you know where this is going. They just approved, let me just pull this up, there's a new name, Storm, already. I think it's Irene or something. I know it's, I forgot the name of it already, but it's the next letter in the alphabet or whatever. So there's a storm coming, all right? So that's important that you address that. But this also needed to be buttoned up for the same reasons. I mean, the, the problems we went on with Walmart, we're going to be dealing with, with the Morgan Group, obviously, and they're going to try to pretend that this doesn't exist, their grandfathered in, and all that nonsense. So you have to button this up as soon as possible, yes? Oh. It's not mine, it's something about the ACLU, though, very interesting. I must have manifested it out of thin air, just by speaking about these things. So I won't belabor the point. Thank you for fixing this, and again, we're talking about saving lives here. It's not just about, you know, making a developer jump through more hoops, doing the stuff for a reason. If they can't get their stuff built in a timely manner, they want to try to pretend that they can still do it the way it was before. They got to be held to current standards for a reason. Save human lives, that's what this is all about. That's what you guys are supposed to be doing, is be working for the people, save human lives, not to be working for developers. It just doesn't, you know, it's not the way it's supposed to work. It's the way it was working for a very long time, and it didn't work out so good for some people. Anyways, I think you understand what I'm trying to say, even though I'm not being very articulate right now.
It's Tropical Storm Lee.
Thank you. Tropical Storm Lee. It's headed to the East Coast of the United States. I don't know exactly where it's going. So again, these things that you are deciding on, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for expressing how urgent it is that you, I mean, we got to get that done. That's urgent. That, that does supersede any other item you were going to talk about, because again, it, it goes to human life. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boski. Is there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online with a comment? Please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, allow this person in.
Good evening, gentlemen. Peter, Lacus five one four, Ashland Avenue. Let's get to some things here. On the board that Renee has up there, on page two, where it says, site plan construction permit, does obtain within one year of site plan construction, should that be site plan approval? Now, on page five, down at the bottom, it, on under E, it says, unless a phasing plan is specifically approved, da, 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 has two years from the date of approval to obtain a construction permit, but then down below under two ten oh five, A, it says, approval of site plan shall expire in one year from the date of the original approval of this construction permit. So you have one thing saying one, and then another saying two, so I'm a little confused there, if that could be clarified, but I really want to get down to page seven, under definition, where it talks about building permit, and then you specifically have here tree removal permits, clearing and grubbing permits, dock permits, and dredge fill permits are not considered building permits for the purpose of meeting expiration deadlines associated with approved conditional uses, site plans, plan developments, civil development orders. Building permit shall expire, ordinance with the requirements of Board of Statute. One, my question be is, why are these being excluded? And secondly, normally, some of these things have to be required before you can start any building. So to me, there's, you know, I, I'd like to see a real good explanation why these permits are not considered under those timeframes. But otherwise, I appreciate the fact you're cleaning these things up. There do need to be specific timelines, and I thank you, Renee, for all your hard work, and I appreciate the board bringing this up forward again. And I would also like to thank the board for allowing us to participate remotely. I had to feed my dogs, and once I got here and can pay attention and call in, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, any other comments?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. Let me go to the commission. Any commissioner comments? Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes. Under, excuse me, under Section E, it says, unless a phasing plan is specifically approved, but, unless a phasing plan is specifically approved by the Board of Commissioners, the applicant has, and one year has been struck out and two years have been inserted from the date of approval to apply or, or rather, to obtain a construction permit or building permit. It's too long, six months. They need six months.
To obtain?
With the six months extension. That's what they should get.
I'm just going to very respectfully disagree.
I mean, we live in a tolling state, which means every time our delightful governor or we have a blow up somewhere, it gets another six months added on. And this happens every year, sometimes twice a year, as, as I recollect, and I think almost three times one year because of COVID. This is just the fact of the state that we live in. A two-year period can be extended to two and a half, to three, to three and a half, to four and five. They could be, they could be walking this thing for, for multiple, multiple years. So in my opinion, six months is, with a six-month extension, should they not make it, is sufficient enough for anybody who has their act together to actually do it. Just my opinion.
Sir, is that, is there anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Kulyas, anything? Okay.
Mayor, if I may, there was one item in here where it does have it coming back to the commission for reasonable cause when there is a request for an extension of the building permit. And I think that for the first go-around, it would be more appropriate for staff or your building officials specifically to grant those types of extensions for good cause rather than the Board of Commissioners. You know, what Vice Mayor Lot said is very accurate in terms of there being a lot of extensions because of declarations of state of emergencies that do toll the time for permits and can extend permits and development order dates pursuant to state law and state statute. So that is actually a very, a very real thing that happens quite often.
Okay. Right, you're just commenting that, that Vice Mayor Lot's observation as far as the, the emergency extension is, is correct.
Right, that, that, that's by operation of law, that's not, yeah.
You're not suggesting that it be reduced from, not agreeing that it be reduced from one year to six months, are you?
I have seen that.
Okay, that's good.
That's a policy decision for this board.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Because I've got, I've got one or two.
I'm not going to support six months at this time.
You're not?
No.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. Vice, I'm sorry, Commissioner Eisner, go ahead.
Whatever your name is, it's okay. I'll answer to anything. I could see your point, Vice Mayor, so I would agree with you with the six months, and then we could look to see about having either the permit department, if there's extenuating circumstances, extending it, because we do get two, three hurricanes a year. What Mr. Boski brought up just now, I mean, I went to look, it's, it's a tropical storm with a hundred forty-five mile an hour winds that's going to grow into a massive, you know, storm, which is what they're predicting, and that's going to extend time every which way to Sunday, so I would be considering that six month as well.
Okay. Ms., did you want to say something?
Oh, wait, I love it. I do want to address some, I do want to.
Okay, I, in, in our development orders, we've been fairly, we've been consistent, not fairly consistent, consistent that we, we add that provision at the end that all the permits have, I don't recall the exact language, but basically, all the permits have to have, be in hand before we issue a permit. Is that correct?
We have done that for, specifically with planned developments, but as I, I'm going to defer to the attorney here about whether or not we have the ability under state statute to impose that.
Right, there, there is a provision of state law that says that a local government cannot withhold its permits based on another jurisdiction's failure or not having those permits issued from another jurisdiction that has concurrent ability to issue a permit. You know, a lot of times, it can be F dot, it can be, you know.
Pinellas County.
Yeah, Pinellas County. So, so there's other agencies that can have concurrent jurisdiction to issue permits. We can't base our issuance of a permit on what those other jurisdictions are doing because essentially, they're different standards, and that's pursuant to Florida, a Florida statute.
But, I mean, doesn't this development order, ordinance cover planned developments as well?
It, it does. We've, whenever we've had ordinances for planned developments and we have conditions of approval, especially on preliminary plan developments before they get to final, you know, we have, we have in the past put conditions that said you must have, you know, your swift mud permits and things like that. They're, to a degree, they're somewhat negotiated because they're these planned developments for, so I, I think under that, under that plan development process, that's a little different than your straight site plan permitted use by right, you know, meet the land development code, get your permits and go. I think that's where I'm having a little more concern about, you know, putting in an additional requirement that says we can't issue a permit until we have all the other jurisdictional permits. And now, as a matter of practice, we get them, you know, with, as we're, as we're issuing, so.
So if we wanted to pursue something for a planned development, RPD or whatever, we would have a different section of the code where that would belong rather than this one, is that, is that right?
I think we would need to add something to the planned development section of the code.
Just deal with this one tonight, then, that's all I, okay.
Regarding the other, the six month versus two years, so I, I do want us to be cognizant of, if we put in that, once a final plan development is approved, or a site plan, that you only have six months to basically obtain a building permit or obtain, that means you're going to submit it, it's going to go through our building department, all these different departments that review them for everything, and there's only six months. So that's also putting a burden on staff to timely turn these things around. So unless there's a way to kind of tease apart the, the process, and that, that, that makes me, you know, six months makes me very uncomfortable. I would at least go with a year, but I, you know, we have things that we have to meet.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was going to say, is I know that under state law, you have thirty days.
Right.
Once you receive the application, to say whether or not.
It's complete.
It's complete.
Right.
So, I mean, when you look at those types of timelines, that's a lot more pressure than the six months, because, you know, within that six months, it gives you, I think, under state statute, from the time you receive the application, what, like a hundred and eighty days? I know you can go back three times at basically like thirty, thirty days a pop.
Right.
Back and forth, and that's about it.
Unless it's equally waived between the two entities.
And that's really basically all you have.
We can go with six. You're the policymakers.
Commissioner Eisner, you had a question?
So correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know whether you want to correct me, Ms. Kardashian or Regina, or Renee, sorry. This is, this six month is on the developer, not on us. If we cannot get this.
So the, the, it puts a lot of, it does put pressure on the developer not to sit on their project approvals, and kind of encourages them, when they come to the city, that they're ready to go.
Right.
Not that they're going to sit and they're going to sell their development plans to somebody else to build what to build what they went through the permitting process for, which is something that happens a lot. So that's part of the impetus and, and where you're going to put that pressure. And what you want to decide is your policy as a city in terms of whether or not you want these developers to come to you when they're ready to develop and move their projects forward, or you want to allow for the, the sale of those plans to subsequent developers who may or may not follow everything that was promised by the original applicant that came before you.
Did you want to say something else? Yes, yes. So, for a number of years, I sat on the Board of Adjustments. And people came before us and they, they got a permit. And I won't mention which property it was, but they just held on to it. And then they put it up for sale, and when they didn't get a buyer, they came back to us again to, to readdress, which was fine. But the kind of excuses that you got for why it wasn't, why it didn't go forward, it wound up failing for that, for those reasons. We had another situation where a, a person came before us, got a variance to build something, and they just didn't build it, and they came back and said it was because they took an architect in another country who didn't know about the wind in, in Florida. I mean, it would, there's so many reasons. So I am more so wanting to keep at least the feet to the fire for the person, the developer that's coming in to do work here. And if we have to extend it because we can't meet there, they should, you know, that, that just happens. There's, there's no two ways about that. But we, we have our feet to the fire with the 30 days.
Oh, yes.
So, you know, to me, I'm, I am for the six month. And if there's extenuating circumstances, it could always be changed. That's all I want to say.
Okay, are there any other, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kulianis, there are, yeah.
We talk about this 30-day rule with, you know, once, for permits to get issued, and at times we, we go beyond the 30 days. I'm telling you, developers right now, they're, they're gonna hold the city staff to feed to the fire if they're not getting their documents within 30 days. And that's something I'm concerned about, Russian city staff, although they do have obligations to meet within a certain amount of time. We, we understand some of the issues within the building department at times with, with processing permits. And, and so, six months is just too short. And, and, you know, frankly, if someone, you know, if they go through the process and, and they're able to sell that planned development to someone else, and that's the six-month difference, you know, six months to a year, then so be it. But I, I don't want to micromanage them to the point where, you know, you have to get this done within a certain amount of time, which also stresses our city staff. So I think a year's reasonable, and something in between. You know, there, there's a hurricane, there's gonna be another pandemic, something's coming along the way at some point, you know, so I think a year's fair enough.
Okay. I, I don't have any other comments. Any other comments? Anybody?
I have some.
You go ahead. You know, it's six months plus an extension of six months, so that, that is a year. What we're saying here is, we're gonna limit that timeframe to a year, rather than start off with a year and then have another extension and a, and a toll and, and so forth. So I don't see where six months is putting, we have to react in 30 days in certain cases. Certainly, the developer should be ready to go within six months. It's, that's-
That's my final word, I'm sorry.
If there's no further comments, I'm gonna ask for a motion. And this would be for approving ordinance 2023-09, and to add any changes that you would want, amendments to that ordinance for this, for the second reading. If you have any amendments.
I'm gonna do a motion to approve ordinance 2023-09 with a six-month provision.
Be more, a little more specific, not the-
A six-month that they, the developer has to be ready to have a permit.
Can, the clarification I would be looking for is, is it six months for them to apply? Or is it six months for them to obtain?
To, I would do six months to apply, to, to maintain.
And then were you looking also to revise so that your staff grants the extension?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you follow that?
Was it six months to obtain?
Yes.
I did follow it then.
That's for final planned developments and site plans? Because those are two different things.
We're gonna have Ms. Kardashian read the motion to make sure it's clear. That's why this is something that we can't be general about as far as just six months. Is there any, let, let's hear what the Commissioner Eisner's motion is through Mrs. Kardashian's words, and then we'll see if we get a second to that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve ordinance 2023-09 with an amendment from the two years as written to six months to obtain a permit, and an amendment for staff to grant the extension for good cause rather than the Board of Commissioners.
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, okay. If there's no further comments, roll call.
I think we're micromanaging.
Hey, hang on. Did you want to say something, Commissioner Kulianis?
Yeah, I think we're micromanaging. I think we're using our power to try to force development sooner than later. And I don't think it's a good move. I think one year is more than enough time with what we got going on. Six months is rushing our staff, which we know there's issues with, with permitting at times. It's putting a lot of stress on them and, you know, here we are telling developers in, in town, it's time to speed things up, you know, and have everything in a row, when at times staff may not even be able to hold their end of it, so.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yeah, our, just for clarification, you, the six months is the final planned development approval, obtained VOC approval within one year? That's what's being switched to six months? Or the obtained within two years of final planned, that's what's being changed to six months? The two years is going to six months?
Correct.
I, I think that's too short. There, there's a motion, so.
City Manager LaCorse, do you have anything to say on this?
I prefer the year, but we'll, we'll adopt however the board decides to.
What? So basically, it, it's not an easy choice, but quite frankly, this is the first reading, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go ahead, in my opinion, we could turn it down, and then if we just, if we turn this ordinance down, then basically we go back to the drawing board again, is that correct? We have nothing.
You can do that, or you can entertain a second motion.
Okay, that's right. So that's our choices. We can do, we can approve this one, entertain a second motion. We can take time between, if this is approved, between this and the second reading to have conversations with the city manager, Ms. Vincent, to try and recalibrate everybody's thinking on that. So let's, let's just make a decision here. We've got a motion and a second. If there's no further, I, I would be interested in hearing a little more about the six months myself. But if there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
No.
Commissioner Kulianis?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiades?
I'm gonna say yes, and I'd like to have a discussion. The answer is yes. That's approved. And I'm gonna have a discussion with Ms. Vincent and the city manager between now and the second reading on this thing. And, and that can be amended again at the second reading. So, thank you, Ms. Vincent.
Thank you.
All right, item 18, ordinance 2023-20, yard waste collection procedures and fees. City Manager LaCorse.
You want to read the-
I'll read, I'll read it by title, Mayor.
It's getting a little late for me. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2023-20, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending portions of Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, eliminating plastic bags as allowable containers for collection of yard waste, increasing the fees for yard waste, and providing for an effective date of this ordinance. This is first reading. The second reading will be held on September 19th, 2023, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September 6th, 2023.
And Tom Function's gonna give this presentation, so, Tom?
Good evening, everybody. Public Works Department is implementing an environmentally sustainable initiative to reduce the waste, save some money, and provide educational outreach to residents on, on proper yard waste disposal procedures. The city's yard waste facility reserve receives approximately 208 tons of yard waste monthly, much of it is bagged in plastic non-compostable garbage bags. As a result, the yard waste cannot be processed as regular, as regular yard waste is, or, or unbagged stuff. Approval of this amendment will reduce waste, eliminate the use of plastic bags for yard waste, save, of course, save us some money, and be a much more environmentally sustainable solution. Proposed changes, the proposed changes. Except yard waste, including yard clippings, grass cuttings, leaves, shrubs, palm fronds, small tree limbs, not exceeding four inches in diameter nor over four feet in length, shall be collected in 30-gallon paper yard waste bags or placed loosely in a 30-gallon reusable tote. Plastic bags will not be collected for yard waste disposal nor accepted at the City Tarpon Springs Yard Waste Facility at 101 East New Year's Boulevard. You'll also see changes to fees, which are reflected in the ordinance, which have not been increased since 2007. Now, there's two spots of this ordinance over here. The first part of the ordinance will be approved, will be beginning in October 1st of '23. And Section 5, which has to do with the bags, would be in effect December 1st, 2023.
Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments? Mr. Jump?
If anyone online would like to speak on the side, please raise your hand, and I'll, I'll allow you in.
Here to line 514 Ashland Avenue, I'd like to applaud the Public Works Department for moving forward on this. This has long been overdue. The important thing here, though, is education, getting word out to the public. And here again, this is where we need to use our media as a way to broadcast this out. Put out a new, a new little blurb on the city's TV channel, and maybe put something also on the radio station, 1610, that's underutilized. But the important thing is getting the word out to people. I just heard Tom say it won't be in effect till December of '23, so I'm not sure why it can't go into effect sooner. Maybe that can be answered, but it does need to be rectified because we have a problem, as, excuse me, Tom has mentioned, where you're having contaminated yard waste, and that's the same thing also with contaminated recycling. So we really need to get the word out about how to improve our recycling cycles such that we are not throwing more into the regular landfill. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Mr. Jump, anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
All right, Commissioner comments on this? Any Commissioner comments? Anyone? Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, just quickly, we do need to get out the message, because I did look this up, and the compostable bags are very easy to come by, they're cheap as could be. And maybe we could even have, you know, some sort of even distribution of them to some degree, I don't know. I'm not looking for you to put them in every one of the water bills.
Tom kind of left that out, so if you want to talk a little bit about that, you left that portion. Plus the port, I'm the one who, who extended it to December because I wanted more time. I don't think some people realize the, the effect of this change is gonna be a bit, so I thought the time period was too short that was proposed. I'm the one who extended it another month to December to try to get the word out and talk about the program you're talking about.
Yeah, Mark, Mark has approved us purchasing. We're gonna be purchasing about 40,000 bags, and then we will distribute it to, to our residents out here, so they have those bags on, in hand.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Just as a transition to get used to it, because as I know a lot of people that I know, especially my age, this transition is not gonna be an easy one. So we wanted to give the time, we wanted to initially give the first gesture of getting them used to it, and, and then they'd be on their own. So that's why that method with the exact thought, as you said, was why we, we decided to do that.
Yeah, it's, I, I looked at it, I mean, it's, it's better use. They're, they're stronger, they're better, they're cheaper, and, and they just dissolve. So, I mean, it's, it's a plus all the way around, so.
Were you talking about paper bags?
No, no, the, the compostable paper bags. They're, they're like a plastic, but they're, they, they just evaporate. They, they just dissolve, so.
Okay, so let me go to other Commissioner comments. Were there, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, any other Commissioner comments?
I'm just glad to see this finally kick in. I think taking plastic out of our solid waste or yard waste stream is the best thing we could do.
I got a little clarification on the bags. They actually are paper bags. There are, there's a combustible bag that you're talking about.
Yes.
They don't have the strength the paper ones have, so we decided to go with the paper ones. It was a much better product. And we followed, actually, we talked quite a bit with Sarasota County had done this over here. They actually implemented theirs in 30 days. Well, it was better off if we waited 60 days over here. It was a little bit easier transition that way.
The only thing that concerns me on the paper bags is with rain. You know, how, how do they hold up, you know? I, I don't want to see stuff all over the streets. I mean, that would be bad.
Neither do I, because we have to go get it, but, yeah. But yeah, but you can still put it in, you know, 35-gallon garbage cans, they can pick it and dump it. You can put it in a box, if you want to put a plastic box, that's, that's, that's fine, too.
Okay.
Is there any other comments? Because my main concern is, just as City Manager LaCorse is saying, there's a whole lot of people that are accustomed to using plastic bags. I put out not 40, not 30 gallons, which is what the paper bag is, which is what you buy, but 45 gallon. And I put 15 of those bags out at a time when I've wrote, or raked the yard as an example. And oftentimes, those leaves are damp. And so it doesn't matter when it rains. It could be damp leaves, and your bag is gonna fall apart at the street. And I've also had situations where I've struggled with plastic bags, and I brought the old duct tape out to try and put them together, so I wouldn't have a big mess on my end. My only concern for what we're doing is that I, I would hope, I would have hoped that we would have given it more thought as far as some options. And I don't know what those are. I don't think paper sacks are a solution, and from what I've seen, and I've looked at Amazon, and they're about 40, 50% more expensive on a per gallon basis than plastic bags. And I don't know whether there's, I do know that there's soluble plastic as well. I've not even looked at that. And I just don't want to, even if it's a two-month period, don't want to impose going to plast, to paper bags, given the circumstances that, of, of what I just described. And it's not just leaves, it's twigs and things where plastic bags are a lot more forgiving. They, they stick out through the sides rather than actually tearing. So I, I'm, I'm not sure I'd like, I, I don't know, I'm not gonna support this tonight, just because I'd like for there to be some more homework done as far as options. City manager and I briefly talked about that. I understand that we could provide, put leaves in our own
Trash containers.
Cans or stuff, if you will. But basically, if I had like even 10 bags, I'd have to go buy 10 trash cans and fill those up and put them at the street, and then I'd have to be dealing with 10 trash cans at my house. I, I'm not sure, there must be some other thing that we can do, that Waste Management can come up with. This is, this is not Waste Management, don't worry, is it?
No, it's not, but I did have a conversation with Waste Management on this. It's, and they've attempted the, the mayor put extra men on their trucks that'll actually open these bags and, and open them up. Extremely expensive and hard demand. It's tough getting labor as it is now, so it becomes very, very costly.
And there, there's nothing, no other option that you've seen other than the containers, rigid containers, are paper bags. There's no, nothing else that would work.
Nothing. We looked at, as, as Commissioner Eisner had said about those, they had a plastic type of bag over here, but it doesn't hold- Nothing, we looked at, as Commissioner Eisner has said about those, they had a plastic type of bag over here, but it doesn't hold any weight whatsoever. We looked at those and they just weren't worth it, they're gonna weigh in maybe fifteen or twenty pounds, but not the same volume and the weight. I mean, you can use almost a plastic tote, almost like you utilize for recycling, that works fine. I know it's hard, like you said, people get ten or fifteen bags out there, and if, you know, we can always sit down and talk about, maybe there's a somehow we can change the process of picking it up, maybe add an additional service day or something like that, but it's all gonna cost.
Yeah.
And the process is, as you, I don't know if you got a chance to see the other backup on the other stuff, but the process, the plastic bags is extremely, it's gonna be well over a hundred dollars a ton starting at.
So, Mr. Function, I wanna be clear, Waste Management does the pickup, right?
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't matter to them whether they dump a can of leaves into their truck or throw a bag, whether it's plastic or paper into their truck.
Yes.
But then, once they offload that at our facility, then it's a different contractor that basically is involved, is saying that they can't accept the plastic bags, because it's not
They can't recycle it, it ends up going to another waste cycle. They bring it to the yards, but it doesn't turn into mulch, it ends up being in my case, just sent to the incinerator.
Are there many plastic bags that are taken, and I think you had that in your backup, right? Was it twenty or thirty percent coming in?
Twenty or thirty percent of material is just the plastic over here, so they can't grind it, it hangs up in your equipment, so that's why they don't grind it, and of course, it's very expensive, we even looked at one time, we did a while back, and bring the labor in and trying to pick the bags out of there, but you just.
Okay, the only thing, it may pass, there aren't a whole lot of comments tonight, but I'm not gonna support, because I really would think, I would like to ask the list of more options, and I don't know, I'll even look at them myself before we pass this, and you know, I'm just not ready to tell people that they need to use paper bags to put their leaves in there, given what I know the problem, I mean, I've experienced that, what I know the problem's gonna be, and then I start hearing it from people, that's all, so, okay, that's all I've got to say. Is there a motion to approve in the second? Are there any other comments?
I do see this right, there's a potential five percent increase per household on this service, right? And we do have another item for the special consent coming up about yard waste disposal disposal services. Does that include an increase, too?
There is no increases to Waste Management's pickup at all, this is just.
This is just hauling off at the yard.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion to approve in a second, please.
I would do a motion to approve, I mean, honestly, I'm looking at, I shouldn't, I'll just say that, then I'll talk afterwards.
Okay, so you, your motion to approve, and then Vice Mayor Lunt, second, okay. If there's no further comments.
Well, I have comments, I mean, I'm pulling this up as we're speaking here, and I'm just looking on Amazon, there's one point one mil thick, there's one point five mil thick, there's so many different kinds, and they show, you know, fifty-five gallon, thirty gallon, I mean, we were talking about thirty gallon, you know, regular garbage bags of paper. These things are holding a lot of stuff, I mean, it's something that we can try, and if it doesn't work, then it's a different story, then we can, you know, I mean, to me, it looks like people are using this all over, and it's, you know, it's good for, it's high quality, they're talking sustainable materials.
What is it exactly, a paper bag?
It is a biodegradable bag.
But that's not paper, that's what, that's what.
No, I know, I know, I'm not, I spoke to the City Manager, I was not fond of the paper bag.
Looking at the City Manager, okay.
And I said, we can look again, I know Tom said he looked, but we'll do a review before the second reading, we'll look at that a little more and again.
I'll support it.
Before the second reading.
Okay.
I mean, I was not in favor of the paper bag, I told him that.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I even said, can the person put it in a plastic bag, bring it to the dump, and then dump it out and take the plastic bag with them, because
Yes.
That, I know this paper bag is gonna be a disaster, I know that, but these, they're out there, you know, I use them for my dog as well, they're just a lot smaller, but they are biodegradable, so.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and support this on the first reading, then we'll talk about it between the first and second.
Yes.
Is that fair? Okay. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. Let's see where we are, it's ten forty-one. Resolution two zero two-three dash twenty-five, rules of procedure, Ms. Kardashian, if you could read the resolution by title, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, revising the rules of procedure for the Board of Commissioners, repealing all resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This, I believe, is specifically coming back before you because of the social, the social media, and I did go over this with Vice Mayor Lunt, and there was a section left out posting materials that could be construed as malicious, obscene, or threatening, or that might constitute harassment or bullying, it should read is prohibited, and that's in section C on the social media policy. And then the second item that I discussed with Vice Mayor Lunt was on the personal devices. The legislation is very clear regarding any city-issued devices, and I did take that a step further, but I think that after discussing it more with Vice Mayor Lunt, that may not be necessarily something that applies to you all, because you don't have the type of remote access that I thought you did, in terms of being able to access certain city databases from your personal devices. So, as long as your only access is through city-issued devices that are going to be subject to the state legislation, we can remove that particular provision.
All right, is that it, Ms. Kardashian? Okay, is there any public comments concerning this item? Public comments, okay, Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay.
And just a note, Mayor, there is a small section addition to allow us to do what we're gonna do next meeting and change the meetings due to the holiday schedules, so that is towards the bottom, because it's lost with social media, but towards the bottom, it's that ability to change the dates of meetings during the holiday months, that's the other addition on this.
Don't we do that anyway? Yeah, we just don't have a rule for it.
We do, but now it's gonna be in the rules.
Now we'll have a rule, all right, it makes me feel better. All right, if there's no further Commission, does any Commissioner have a comment, Commissioner Kuliannis?
Who determines what constitutes malicious, obscene, or threatening, or harassment or bullying, who would determine that? Would we have a vote on the board to?
So, you could do it via a determination by the board, if you were going to make a determination that one of your members had violated your rules of procedure, yes. You can do that as a determination of the board. And essentially, really what your recourse at that point in time would be, would be to require them to remove it, whatever the post or posting was.
Does that need to be addressed in these rules and procedures?
You have other types of prohibitions in your rules of procedures, and you haven't really developed a disciplined process as part of your rules, I don't see that as something that's necessary at this point. If it comes to a point where there's a repeated and consistent violation of your rules of procedure, your rules of decorum and things like that by members of the commission, then yes, absolutely, I would recommend putting something in there that provides for a sort of progressive discipline within this body.
That's it, okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I have some.
Let me address Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm not gonna support, and especially this section C, what's malicious, what's obscene, what's threatening, I mean, it seems none of us, I mean, we all have a different understanding of what those terms are, what frivolous is, I mean, there's just a lot of different things, and whatever we can do to get our feelings not hurt and to wipe away all this extra stuff, that's what needs to happen, we're bold individuals up here, we chose to be up here, and you may not like certain points that are getting out there at times, but that's what we signed up for, and so we wanna sit there and get offended, this looks bad. This looks bad on many levels, and so I'm just not gonna support it, you're basically trying to shut up elected officials, because there's strong points in which some are really strong, that still sit out there, you know, unanswered, and so.
Can I interrupt here?
Not yet, point of order, sir. And so what we're trying to do here is limit the ability for commissioners to get their thoughts out. And what your thought is may be different from someone else's thought. And what your perception is, is clearly different from some other perceptions up here. And so, I'm not gonna support it, and I think we all need to toughen up and do whatever we can to make sure that our feelings don't get hurt, and whatever's described or expected to be courteous, 'cause here's one thing I'm gonna officials may not evade these guidelines by posting anonymously, requesting others to post on their behalf, or posting under an assumed or false screen name. Some of us are guilty, just that alone, up here, all right? Including myself from before with other people, that's why I cut things off. And so when I see this type of stuff, we're just playing along to some other person's agenda, or we don't have the thick skin to be in the positions that we're in. So that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Vice Mayor Lunt, did you have something?
Yeah, first of all, I think I understand that Commissioner Kuliass's passion and stuff as far as rhetoric used on the dais. Here we're talking about posting, which is a somewhat different thing. Although, who arbitrates what is malicious, obscene, or threatening, or constitute harassment or bullying is pretty much in the eye of a beholder, but we're all adults here, I think we could pretty much decide what that material might be. The comment I wanna make is that, that is an orphan sentence, it doesn't have any attributed anything to it. All it says is posting materials that could be construed as malicious, obscene, or threatening, or that might constitute harassment or bullying, period. Doesn't have, say, is prohibited, or as it probably should, but it doesn't have that statement in there. The other comment that I'll follow up with that Ms. Kardashian made was, was the fact that for us to access databases with our own devices outside the city, and to restrict that access, or to restrict applications on that particular device, that's not supportable in any way, shape, or form. The state government specifically regulates government-owned devices, and we can do that just as easily. But you cannot tell a private citizen, even if it's an elected official, that he has to remove something off his private device in order to not be able to access something, it's just, it's, how are you ever gonna know what's on his device? You can't be the hall monitor for every device that ever has access to your system. It's just not enforceable, and I'm speaking from the basis of a person that deals with thousands and thousands of students every every day with private devices, and it's just, you just can't do it. If the devices are supplied by the government, yes, you can restrict what applications are on there, but nobody can come up to me and say, well, you can't have that on your device, or you can't access my email, which is an application, or I can't access the public access to our database for the public access database for Commissioner meetings or whatever, it's just not a supportable thing, so that needs to be struck. And the other sentence either needs to be deleted entirely, if that's the way the Commission wants to go, or it needs to put some sort of prohibition on it, language associated with it, and that's my comments.
Okay. This is a rules of procedure resolution, so are there any other comments?
I have no problem with this, because I don't post anything, so to me, this is fine and dandy.
You know, I honestly, I wish at this point in my life, wish I had an excuse, a legal excuse not to post anything. And you could put anything you want on Facebook, and even it's got nothing to do with the city, somebody always tries to, in a comment, spin it back towards the city about something. And so, from my perspective, and we are elected officials, and we should behave accordingly, as Mr. Kreskouda said at the very beginning of the meeting, and sometimes I kind of wonder about all of that. And so, you know, I'm willing to support anything that forces us into a, and whether it's, you know, my point is, whether you interpret it, there's, you know, the thing is, you always go to Webster's dictionary, there's always, you know, you you convene something, we have a meeting and decide whether something's obscene or something, I don't know. But right now, we don't have anything. And I think that the social media thing with regard to a lot of many things is, and quite frankly, I'm not even so sure that shouldn't even apply to candidates, although legally, I don't think you could do that to candidates. But, you know, I just, I'm willing to support anything right now, it's a resolution, it can change anytime, and if we can think about it some more, but right now, I just wanna move on and put something on the books that helps us kind of think about what we're doing before we actually post it, that's all I wanna say about that.
Just as to the origin, actually, of that specific provision that talks about posting materials that could be construed as malicious, obscene, or threatening, or that might be construed as harassment or bullying is prohibited, which is how it's supposed to read, that actually came from a model personnel directive for law enforcement, is where that came from.
Again, and reading a dictionary, interpreting it, and, you know, what's a threat is depending on where you come from, how you grew up, what you experience in life, threats, accusations, bullying, it's all different.
You know, there's definitions.
Point of order, sir, I'm talking. And we need to understand point of order more. And so, definitions, we talk about definitions and reading and interpreting, but there's real life, too. And some of you guys don't go post on Facebook no more, 'cause you realize it doesn't work to your benefit. And that's why you've been advised to stop posting, all in all. And some have posted their feelings the day after a meeting and accuse of sabotage and conspiracy, I mean, isn't that threatening? Isn't that malicious? It is, so wipe away all this bullying and interpretation stuff, let's be adults up here, let's have the thick skin that we signed up for, and let's move forward, because who's gonna sit there and decide what's bullying, what's malicious? We all have different opinions up here.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lunt, did you?
I have nothing more to say.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
This, this, this is so vague, and again, like Commissioner Kuliass says, who determines you know, malicious, obscene, threatening, harassment, I mean, we you know, legislate or create ordinance for behavior, you know, and then we're gonna have the board now politically decide who should be reprimanded, who shouldn't be reprimanded. I just, I don't like it, and, you know, we, come on, everybody posts stuff, you post cryptic stuff, you might post something, oh, some little cartoon that says something, hey, I could take that as harassment, I could take that as threatening. I don't care. I don't care, you know? I think, I don't care. I think it's childish. Do what you want. But I don't want, I don't, we don't need these rules. And then again, having us sit here and vote, "Oh, this guy posted this. I think it's harassment." "Oh, do three guys agree with me?" "Yeah, let's get that guy. Yeah, let's do it." I'm, this is garbage. I would, I'm not going here. So, you know, you want to behave, behave. You don't want to behave, don't behave. I'm not, I can't support this.
Let me have a motion to extend the meeting in a second, and we can get back to this conversation.
Motion to extend the meeting to 11:30.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Coolianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Commissioner Coolianis, anything else on that? Okay. Ms. Kardashian, do you have any suggestions based on what you're hearing?
Yes, I did just want to clarify that if what you're looking to is just remove that one particular provision or the entire policy. Because, I mean, the whole policy talks about some other things, including things that have been implemented pursuant to state statute. So my question then to the commission is, how do you want to effectuate those rules and some of the other things that are in this overall policy? Or are you just knocking down the entire policy as a whole? Or just those particular sections?
If you're looking at me, I'm fine with, you know, the database stuff, the downloading things, all that. It's just this, again, this part in C that I have a problem with.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'm gonna ask, or comments, I'm gonna ask for a motion. And if somebody wants to make that and remove that one section, you can add that as an amendment to your, to your motion, and then we'll get a second on that. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-25?
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-25 excluding Section 9C.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call.
Commissioner Coolianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
No.
Mayor Vaticius?
I'm gonna go ahead and approve this just for that one section. And then I'd like for us to come back with a second shot at this thing that might try and capture the same sort of thing so we can not disapprove this thing altogether. I think part of what you brought forward is very important to put in place. So I did vote yes on this thing, right? Yeah, okay. So Ms. Kardashian, I'll leave that up to you for the future.
Thank you, Mayor.
I was gonna ask for a deferral for two weeks. We'll work on it again, but this is okay. It's a resolution. Okay. Resolution 2023-34. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read that by title.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-34, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying Executive Order 2023-01 and providing for an effective date hereof.
Okay, City Manager, of course, this is your show.
Yes, again, per our procedures, you know, I made the original decoration. I extended it on Monday, which is the seven days I had to extend it, based on the calls. We had Sunday. St. Pete was already gonna extend theirs, and we have, again, the pickups that we're indulging this week to get to the residents, picking up debris and stuff. So I extended it on Monday. Thank you, Irene, for being available Labor Day for us to do that early morning Labor Day, so we'd have the seven-day extension, so we make sure we get the money back. So what you need to approve and ratify is those two acts of mine, the original and the extension of yesterday.
Okay. Do we need a clear motion on that, or just to adopt what just City Manager just described?
You can just adopt what you just described, yes.
Let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Gaddis, please.
Mayor, did we do public comments on Agenda Item 19, one just previous to this?
Did I miss that, the public comments on the resolution?
You know what? I think we did.
Yes, we did. We had no public, no Zoom, no email.
Go ahead, Mr. Gaddis. Make your comment on, I'm sorry, but go ahead and make your comments on that resolution.
In regards to rules of procedure
Yes.
and posting, you know, public comments on social media and so forth, I feel as though it's a safe way for people to have strong-willed debate, whereas no one's being physically harmed. It's just strong language and so forth that's being tossed around in a social media platform. And I feel as though if we're going to have, and politics is intended for strong debate, founding fathers made that very clear. I feel as though that we will be entering a period where there will be a lot of strong-willed debate regarding the due process clause of the 14th Amendment, which I find to be secular, which I find to be malicious, high-seized blasphemy in regards to the designing of water jurisdictions. And that due process clause will throw some debate into the arena, which will be very heated in regards to how we're going to put together privileges and immunities and subjecting tax-free clauses to certain persons and due process to other persons. And social media is a safe way for, nobody gets hurt. Your feelings might get hurt. But that is probably a very good platform for us to use for discussion. And I think that I do agree with Commissioner in regards to these debates. We can't be thin-skinned up here. We're going to be going into a very strong-willed issue on the 14th Amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gaddis. Okay. We've got public comments concerning the ratifying the state of local emergency as well. Is there any public comments on that item? Mr. Jopp, are there any remote access comments?
And there are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. All right, are there any Commissioner comments?
I didn't get the opportunity to thank the City Manager and all department heads and everyone operating at the Emergency Operating Center during the storm. They did a great job, and it was just really appreciated. I didn't get a chance to tell you earlier. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I'd like to have a motion to the City Manager, to the effect of the City Manager's statements in a second.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-34.
Second.
I'll cover it, City Manager, of course. Yes, okay. Our roll call, please.
Commissioner Coolianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Let's go back to the special consent. And this is...
Excuse me, Mayor, can I ask for a five-minute recess?
Yes, five minutes. Okay, we're gonna, sorry, Ms. Lewis. We're gonna recess for five minutes, reconvene at 11:10.
If y'all turn it down in the regular, no need, if y'all turn the parking study down, or...
Nice.
If we turn it down, we still have to convene...
You had your microphone on while you were turning the hard stuff.
I don't care.
You can convene it and adjourn it if you want to, but...
I brought on three of them at the same time.
All right, we're gonna convene the meeting at 11:12. Okay. And we've got two consent, special consent items, Item 10, Award File Number 230105, Parking Study Consultant Services. City Manager, of course.
Yes, this is, this is one we really struggle with, so Janina's taking the lead. But I also have Karen and Renee, who is involved in this, because again, it's, it was difficult for us. It may be difficult for you. Janina, you want to go ahead and start?
Yes, sir.
With the bid and the bids that came in?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. A while back, the city staff was tasked to solicit for a consultant for the purpose of performing a comprehensive parking study of the downtown parking to determine the demand for and the supply of parking to include both on-street and off-street parking. In the request for proposals, we asked for recommendations, and also we are asking for any suggested improvements to the parking systems and methodologies necessary to foster a vibrant quality of place, sustain economic viability, and maintain the downtown historic area small-town character. The request for proposals went out, and we received four submittals in response. The committee, the evaluation committee ranked all the proposals, and TJMK Inc. was ranked as the most highly rated, considering all the factors, including price. They were selected as a recommended consultant for the parking study that would be in the best interest of the city. And I'll turn it over for questions.
Okay. So how do you want this proceeding?
And again, there's even concerns making that recommendation. And some of you, some of you on the board have brought to me some of the concerns. So I think we just need to talk about some of the concerns. Obviously, the alternative of turning down all the bids and going out, I don't know where that's gonna lead either. So this is a tough one. We recommend it, but I'm not too confident. You know, I have reservations, just like some of you did. So it's best we go to the board and express those reservations that you may have with the bid, because they're probably the same that we had.
Okay, so let's go to public comments first and see if there's any public comments. Any public comments on this item?
East Coast 901 Bay Shore Drive. This is just for on-street parking and off-street parking, not talking about a parking garage. We're not, because we have property off the trail and across the street from the old Smurlus. If you can take a piece of property for a park by eminent domain, and those property owners don't want to sell, which is for a a project for the betterment of the citizens of Tarpon and the community, we need to look at these properties and go after them instead of the Sagonis for a park or the piece down at the docks, which needs to stay on the tax base to bring in more money to the city. And the two pieces on the trail are close enough to Main Street and the one in front of Smurlus. And the two pieces on the trail are close enough to Main Street and the one in front of Smurlus', and I'd like the planning or whoever does this to look at those pieces of property, because citizen, tourists can even walk to the Main Street with parking there, and you can get a lot of parking. And I haven't read the backup on all of this, so this is why I asked and why I'm saying this tonight. One is on Hibiscus, off of Hibiscus, down on the trail, and the other one is by a little further down from where they have the barbecue on the trail, and with the piece across from the old Smurlus Bakery, we've got our parking downtown, but I don't know what this is going to consist with off-street parking, or if you're just doing it with the streets that we already have parking. And we can take out a lot of these middle gardens, or whatever you call them, and add more parking to within the city too, but I'm willing to hear what they have to say.
Okay. Any other public comments? Mr. Jump or Mr. Racies, are there any remote access comments?
And we do have a raised hand, I'll unmute, mute you and you can speak in a moment.
Is that Mike?
No, it's Mike. And you can go ahead and speak, please.
Oh, I think I, am I hearable now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Peter Lax, five one four Ashland Avenue. When I look at the information, especially on page five, where it shows the concentric circles, where a quarter mile, half, eighth mile, or stuff like that, is this study only going to be limited to this area? Because that doesn't even include the northern end of Saford, where we have the dog park and there's parking up there. So what I wonder also is if it can't be included with some type of a transportation mix. We've talked about this before, a local jitney or some type of transportation that can get around. So you don't necessarily have to put the parking in the downtown area. If you have adequate access to parking in other areas and a system for people to get around, this way you can also include the docks into it. You need to have a bigger vision, so I don't know if this study is going to be able to look at that as part of the solution to a bigger problem, or it's just going to look at what's around downtown, and then if there's property, it's going to be more expensive as compared to something a little further away if we set up some type of mobility structure, which is what a walkable, mobile city does. Thanks for your time, I know it's late.
Thank you. Mr. Racies, is there anyone else?
And there are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Whoever did the RFP, I know Ms. Lewis, you'd get direction from senior staff as far as what the RFP is, but could we have somebody explain to us the vision of what this study was supposed to actually accomplish? I mean, I could put it in terms of basically available parking versus parking that we need, but there may be something more as far as the geographic area and things like that that we were...
I'm going to let Ms. Lemmons go over that part. I will tell you that the shuttle transportation option, we did not include in this study. We are looking more towards walkable concept, not relying on transportation at this point in time.
Yeah.
Before Karen goes, can we, there is one that needs to be written in the record, can we have Irene do that one first? Before we go to Karen?
That's right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is from Casey Smith, one oh six East Tarpon Avenue. Good evening, while I am in support of the downtown parking study, I do not support the current initiative up for approval this evening with a budget of fifty-five thousand dollars. On March twenty-first, Mayor Vakiotis asked for feedback from the downtown business community. On April twentieth, a formal letter was submitted from the downtown property and business owners that included forty-eight signatures in support of a comprehensive parking approach. I am not aware of any follow-up or engagement with the property owners. Before we bring in more paid consultants, I believe we should utilize the property owner's history and knowledge of downtown Tarpon Springs. I believe there is some low-hanging fruit that may allow us to add more parking that would not require outside consultant fees. It would be great to see the property owners and their expertise properly leveraged and supported. Thank you for considering these points and my thoughts, Casey.
All right, so you want to take?
Karen?
Go ahead, Karen.
Hi, thank you. As you know, the parking study came out of the discussions with a downtown business that was opening, and that was part of it, we had received all that information and spoken with people downtown. The study is meant to assess what the existing conditions are, to look at what future needs are, assess the weekday, weekend, look at different parking options, look at angle parking, look at putting together a whole parking management study for the downtown area. We did look at limiting it to the downtown area, which is that walk shed map that's in your backup. So what we're trying to do from this is do an overall analysis of the downtown parking. What do we currently have, what do we need, what kind of management structure can we put together? There's a lot of technology out there that could be utilized that we may not be utilizing. Are there existing lots that we could be doing, sharing with other businesses, public-private partnerships? Are there some ideas out there that we're not utilizing? So it's looking at a comprehensive parking study just for the downtown.
Okay. And that's within those concentric circles that, that basically, I've seen that in the, okay.
Right, it incorporates that eighth of a mile and quarter mile.
Okay, we weren't looking at specific parking garages or anything like that, or was that part of it as well? No?
No, not necessarily.
Just short, okay.
Just looking at what we, you know, I think there was a question of is there a demand for more parking? And if so, you know, is it because of people's behaviors or how, because that'll be part of the study when they, when they check the, when they do the existing analysis, they'll look at, okay, what are people's behaviors, where are they parking, are they walking? Is it more on Saturdays, is it weekdays, is it weekends, is it special events? And kind of put together the analysis based on that. And there is a robust community engagement strategy. We thought that was very important for this, to have a robust community engagement strategy. So there are a number of stakeholder meetings that would be held in the very initial part of this and all the way through to the end.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lemmons. All right, what I'm going to do is go to commission comments now. Commissioner Eisner, you've got your light on.
Thank you, Mayor. So first thing, when I got the price tag with this, I immediately called the city manager and I said there would be no way I would ever spend fifty-five thousand dollars to do this type of study. After that, I wound up looking into it a little bit deeper, and the president to, of this particular company that was awarded, most of his work is done in California, it's in Walnut Creek. I believe his name is Nayan Amin. So, I mean, almost all of his work, yet he is looking to sub out to the person who knows the most, this person, Verona, who is like he's cutting, I mean, just plain facts, he's cutting her in for ten-five, ten thousand five hundred, to literally do that kind of the work that we kind of need. So the way I looked at it, it was not something that I would at all go for, entertain. I don't see this being a one-year project unless you really want to milk it. I also would love to know what the other three bidders bid in the, in this process, because on the first part of this, you have here in total points eighty-seven point two versus eighty-three point three. Well, what was the price difference between those is what I needed to know. The next, the third person in this thing is seventy-seven point oh four. I'm not looking to second guess anybody, but I just want to know what prices these were, if these are all in the fifty-five thousand plus category. So I'm not looking to spend that kind of money. I mean, I heard what Casey Smith said, the, there is low-hanging fruit that is not fifty-five thousand, and that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Kuliannis.
Yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of spending fifty-five thousand. I'm going to ask two rhetorical questions that I've asked many times to many people in town that talk about parking. What are the most amount of people that have been in town at any given time? It would be Epiphany, and what's the most amount of people that have been to the biggest Epiphany ceremonies we've had? Twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, I've heard different numbers. And the second rhetorical question is, where did they park? They were there, they're downtown, and they parked somewhere. So we have parking. Now, this, the question is, is convenient parking? You know, we have, and then that's what goes with what Casey was saying, you know, the low-hanging fruit.
Commissioner, may I interrupt to extend the meeting?
Oh, motion to extend the meeting.
Just hang on there, let me have a motion and a second to extend the meeting, then we'll come right back to you. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't have any choice.
Motion to move the meeting till twelve o'clock.
Second.
Twelve o'clock, second, roll call, please, thank you.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vakiotis?
Yes, Commissioner Kuliannis, please proceed.
Wasn't it very enthusiastic, yes, Vice Mayor? Anyways, so I think the issue is, when you talk, when you narrow it down with the downtown merchants or property owners, it's more convenience of spots. So, you know, we have, we have the, the, I don't know, seventy-five spots or whatever, how many spots we have that are over behind the, the old flagship bank. I've talked to the city manager about it before, that a lot of people don't even see that spot. So we have maybe some awareness problem, maybe the signage isn't adequate to get people to park over there. But it's not far, I mean, this isn't a big, this really isn't that big of a town. If you go to other towns, you walk, you walk several blocks to go to where you're going. We, obviously, that's what's happening here. I mean, I drove down Lemon Street and I saw about, I counted sixteen spots from Tarpon Avenue, I mean, from Pine Ellis Avenue, all the way to whatever that, where you turn to go to Vincent's there. I counted seventeen spots that if you knocked all those knockouts, all that decorative stuff that was built, and maybe it's not, you know, sixteen spots, maybe it's twelve spots, but that's twelve good spots in addition to what we already have. Then I think it's premature, first of all, I don't want to spend fifty-five thousand, period, but I think it's premature because we don't have, we don't know if the Roosevelt property is going to get approved. We, conversations have been, the board has talked about having parking at that spot. Now, then we go back to shuttling people around, which I think is a great idea. When you spend fifty-five thousand, we could buy three really souped-up golf carts that we could take people all over, all over town. Then we've got the eighteen spots that Cohatch is supposed to come up with before they can get their occupational license. So let's wait and see what that happens. So if we got, let's even say we can get ten spots on Lemon Street, plus eighteen spots Cohatch comes up with, there's twenty-eight spots. We bring more awareness to the spots that are behind the old flagship bank, we've got all kinds of parking going on. What are you guys, what are you laughing about? I'm going to say something. Oh, all right. So, so I think what we should do is empower our economic development director and maybe Renee, have Karen and Renee work together to meet with property owners and some of the merchants and walk the town. I walked the town with Karen, she and I walked around, all around downtown. We, we just said, oh, there's a couple spots, there's a couple spots, we found all the spots all over. We didn't get, we didn't, we didn't need to spend fifty-five thousand to identify spots in downtown. So anyways, that's where I'm at, I'm not going to approve this, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lund?
Yeah, I'm kind of in concurrence with the current thought here. I'm not about to pay fifty-five thousand dollars a, for a public engagement strategy and an analysis condition is just going to bring the fact up that we need parking and we need more convenient parking, that's all it's basically going to say. Do we need better signage? Yeah, probably, it's hard to find that lot behind the flagstaff. I work for Fridays quite a bit, it's difficult to explain them, how to get them, signage would help. An analysis of parking, excuse me, parking management strategies? We're a city, we put two-hour limitations on on-street parking or four-hour limitations in the mayor's parking lot, if we want to have turnover encouraged and stuff like that, there's not a whole heck of a lot we can do to manage without building a parking garage. So, no, I'm not going to support this, thank you.
I just want to mention there was a really nice property on the corner of Hibiscus and Saford that if rented out would serve some good parking spots for downtown, but just throwing that out there.
Who are you laughing at?
Orange and Stafford. But no, for many reasons, including what Commissioner Eisner said, from where the company's located out of to the outsourcing that looks like what's going to happen, to exactly what we're, you know, what are we looking for? We hear from some of the business owners, the comprehensive parking studies and try to include it all, and we do have some variables that are, you know, the Sponge Docks, the one property down there, if purchased, will open up a lot of things. So I think now's not the time to go through with this one bid and looking to see what can come of it and what other properties nearby we can hopefully get a leasing opportunity with here in the future and try to add more, so that's, I'm not going to support going with this vendor, thank you.
Okay. I guess my only thing is that, I know many, many of us have some, most of us have a pretty definite view of the parking as far as the availability of parking, and it is a matter of parking versus what some business owners would describe as convenient parking, namely something, you know, in front of their store, just, you know, near their store and things like that. And I'm not sure how you kind of get around that sort of discussion with the, and they're recurring, they're, it's not just one time, those discussions happen all the time. Part of the reason for this study is basically very similar to some of the other studies we do is to kind of, although in this particular case, I'm not too happy with the consultant for the very variety of reasons that were chosen, they were from out of state, California, Texas, and only one person was from Florida. and only one person was from Florida. And I didn't understand that six months to the twelve, to the year, but part of the purpose of the study was to provide kind of an honest broker, to make, you know, come up with something and say, okay, this is what you've got. And it's not an issue of the commission, or some commissioners saying X this or that, and businesses saying this or that, it's some third party, who really doesn't have a vested interest in it, saying that this is what you've got, in our professional opinion, this is where you are. They could very well say that we've got plenty of parking, and there's a whole lot of other options that could be undertaken, that we haven't pursued those, because, so, I just wanted to say that, for the purpose of the study, it does accomplish something. Probably fifty-five thousand, although in terms of today's dollars, is not a whole lot of money for a study, and the one question I had was, how does fifty-five thousand turn into six months or twelve months? How does a consultant, I mean, fifty-five thousand, they could burn that up in two or three months, and get this thing out. So, I, I'm not supportive of this, because I think it's the wrong type of consultant. Certainly, the cost is an issue, but it's, I would feel much better if there was somebody like, does a lot of work for Pinellas County or something like that, that would be doing something like this for us as well. Not somebody that, maybe out of the nine consultants, four were from California, four from Texas, and one was from Florida. And I understand from the city staff's perspective, you don't decide who responds to the RP. So, we, you know, we put this out, and this is the best that we can get, and you provide us the best of those alternatives. I want to thank you for that, and I will make sure that what we're saying up here has got absolutely no reflection on any of you, I want to make sure that that's.
Yeah, and if you reject all the bids tonight, we have thought of looking into just what you said about something locally, we have thought of some alternatives to look at, if you do reject all the bids tonight.
Yeah, maybe, because I know one thing we've done in the past, is we've looked at Pinellas County, an existing contract, and we piggybacked and picked on them as a task, and they've allowed us to add a task for that particular consultant, not the fifty-five thousand, but something a little more reasonable than that. So, anyway, that's all I have to say on that. Is there any other comments? And if not, then we're going to go to a motion, and then ask for a second, motion to approve in a second.
And I think Janina, would be the, the motion be to reject all bids?
No, it would be to, would it be to, yes, I guess you're right.
Yes, it would be to reject the recommended proposal and cancel the solicitation.
To reject all bids.
And cancel the solicitation.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion to reject all bids, and to cancel the solicitation, and a second to that effect. That's still an affirmative way of doing it, because you vote yes to do it, and, go ahead.
So, you want to approve it, the motion?
No, no, no.
I make a motion, we cancel the bids, and.
Reject all bids.
Reject all the bids, and cancel the solicitation.
That's correct.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further comments, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have a?
I'm sorry, motion to reject all bids, and?
What?
And to cancel the solicitation, cancel the RP. Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
No comments.
No comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticio.
Yes, thank you, Ms., thank you, the three of you over there. Okay, so what have we got? Okay, Ward File Number Two Three Zero One Four Three Yard Waste Debris Disposal Services, City Manager LaCorus.
Yes, Ms. Lewis will start while Tom's walking up.
Okay, good evening again. So, I don't have my sheet in front of me, but I will tell you, this is the rebid for the yard waste debris. Initially, we put it out, and we received a single bid, that bid was way beyond what our budget could handle, so we recommended rejecting the bid and redoing the solicitation. We went back out for another time, and again, we received a single bid from the same company, Consolidated Resource Recovery. At this time, we then worked with Consolidated Resource Recovery to kind of come to the table, what we could do for them, and what they could do for us to come to a price that we could agree upon. And I'll turn it over to Tom, if you have any further questions on how we came to those terms.
Tom?
Good evening, Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. Yeah, as Janina explained, we did put this out to bid, and the prices were extremely high, so we got this opportunity to talk with this company, negotiate this price. We did a lot of research prior to this, on what the neighboring counties were handling, and what they were being charged, and that helped us reduce the original estimates, they had it about ninety dollars a ton, and we worked them down to sixty-four dollars and fifty, sixty-four fifty-two a ton for services. The only area that would actually be a little less money right now would be Hillsborough County, over at the Lime Boss Station over there, which Forenza actually does their work there, but their contract is up next year, so it's probably going to shoot up quite a bit over there. So, this will put us in competitive with everyone else that handles this type of waste, and I'm pretty much open to questions after that.
Thank you, Mr. Funchen. Let me go to public comments, are there any public comments? Mr. Racies, are there any remote access comments?
And we do have a raised hand at this time, and I will let the citizen in. Please unmute and speak.
Good evening, gentlemen, it's late, so we'll try to be brief. We're kind of in a pickle, in a sense, but I wanted to point out, on the second page, part of the way they renegotiated was that they removed the plastic bags, so you can see the tying of the other ordinance to this. But I mentioned earlier, vision, vision, vision. Now, they want sixty-two, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred to start, and it also says, it's a five-year contract, and they have consumer price index increases. So, if you figure anywhere around four to five percent increases each year, and that compounds, by the time you've gone through five years, you're going to spend over three million, probably three and a half million dollars. Now, here's where I talk about vision, and I hate to do it, but I mentioned at the last meeting when we talked about this, finding a site on the north side of the river, and putting the yard waste facility there. Now, something else I've also seen, and through my travels of late through Florida, there's a lot of yard waste debris that is usable, and I even see it at our site. If we could find a public-private partnership for some way, we lease or purchase and co-lease the software site. We put in a marina down at the bottom, and then on the north side, we put in a yard waste and a mill, a mill, and we start processing and start getting back some revenue from this. Instead of paying people to haul it away, we should be revenueizing it, so we can get something back out of it. So, unless there's any state law that says we can't do it, we could find a way to create our own processing site, where we create mulch, I've seen some trees, you've seen some of them out there at the mirror site, twelve, twenty feet long, three, four feet across, there's lumber in that, lumber. So, we're throwing away resources, and we're paying somebody to take them away. Where we should be looking is, how do we use those resources our community is producing to make a return on it? Even if it's a small return, it's more in than you're paying out.
Mr. Delakis.
So, that's the vision, thank you, I know it's late, God bless.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to commission comments, anyone have any comments? Who wants to start? No comments? All right. Just so we know, the, this material is hauled off to where? Do we know where it's hauled off to?
Yeah, they had, there was a site, I'm not exactly sure where they're going, but it's a permitted site, that's all part of the contract.
It's no longer burned like it used to be, is that correct, to these?
That's correct, they turned this into a mulch now.
They don't do that anymore?
No.
Okay, because we used to be fuel for, for something or another, I can't remember.
Some do, some do haul it up, too, I think it's, there's a couple of burning plants, some that use it.
So, at this point, real near term, we're kind of in an extremist situation.
Oh, without a doubt, yes, sir.
Very much so.
Yes, so.
Very much so. I appreciate the, kind of like, the creativity of things, and maybe we can look into that, but for the near term, we're not in that situation, that we can afford to waste time on this, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, are there any other further comments? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve in a second. Okay, motion for, may I have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any further commission comments? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticio.
Yes. Okay. That ends the agenda for this evening, and let me go to staff and board comments. No comment, okay. Ms. Kardashian, do you have any comments, or?
Nothing further this evening, thank you.
Can you say that one more time?
I said nothing further.
Okay. City Manager LaCorus?
No, no comments.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to let the public know, if anyone's still watching, that we still have a lot of positions open for the Citizens Academy, starting next week. Usually, we have a list, because we have so many apply, so we've put press releases and things out.
We'll see how it goes, as far as recruiting another, more individuals. Okay, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate our thanks to the police and fire department and staff that stood by through the hurricane. It was a long stint for them, it turned out really well. You know, some people lost their homes because of the fire, but we did what we could to mitigate that, which I thought was great, so, anyway, thank you all, again.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank both Youngs, both Chief, Chief, all the staff, everybody did a great job, and a special thank you to our Chief of Police, there was a little incident that came about with the Red Cross, and I was really happy that you came through, and you helped buffer the situation, because they were here doing their utmost to help everybody. So, I do want to thank you, I hate to bother you on the weekends, but, you know, it was really appreciative, so thank you for what you did.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yeah, I just want to say, welcome, Ms. Kardashian, it was, I think, I thought it was a great meeting, there's some of these resolutions and ordinances, her advice and counsel helped us get through the motions, and I'm excited about this regular session meetings moving forward, thank you.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yeah, it was, it was an exhausting week last week, anytime these storms are coming, or there's so much anxiety, and it's just, it was, it was a tough week. I'm really proud of our city, that, how we responded, the, obviously, the, our city manager, and the chiefs, and department heads, and everybody who helped. I'm excited about working with Ms. Kardashian, she's, again, I had some experience with her at P&amp;Z, and I know she's great, so. And I'm also looking forward to any, our follow-up assessments on the storm, and, you know, it was, I know that we had some trouble getting through some water, that was higher than, like, our trucks could get through, so maybe we have to think about how we're going to get some other vehicles that can handle water that deep. So, I'm looking forward to our follow-up assessments after you guys get through all this, and, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kardashian, and welcome aboard, and this is an extraordinary, long meeting, compared to calm, but a long meeting to what we normally experience, so thank you for your patience. I have no further, but I want to remind everybody, don't pack up yet, we've got a very brief Community Redevelopment Agency meeting right after this, real quick, so, meeting adjourned at eleven fifty-one.
Regina, your first eight-hour day.
Maybe my first with you. I said maybe my first with you all.
Okay, is Dan going to come up here?
Yeah, he'll come right up here.
Ms. Jacobs, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. A call to order, the meeting of the Board of the Downtown Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at eleven fifty-two. Roll call, please.
Chairman Vaticio.
Chairman Vaticio is here.
Vice Chair Lunt?
Here.
Commissioner?
Here.
Commissioner Kulias?
Here.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Here.
Okay, this evening, it's just a real brief meeting, I want to introduce Mr. Dan Lewis, he'll be our Community Redevelopment Agency attorney. We're kind of formalizing the way we do business here, there, there's, you'll hear more about this going on to the future, but I just want to let it go at that, it's late in the evening. We did have one agenda item, which was the parking study for consultant services, that's been kind of taken care of, so the only thing I wanted to do since we'd actually, and you can't make a call in the city commission meeting about what you're going to do with the CRE, we're completely independent of each other. So, the purpose of this meeting was just to follow through, and convene the meeting, and adjourn the meeting, so there is no business this evening. And unless any CRE board members have any comments, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Anybody, anything? Okay, meeting adjourned at eleven fifty-three. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Lewis did a good job.